All right, good morning to everybody. Today's Monday, August the eleventh, twenty twenty five, nine o'clock a.m. Gonzales County Commissioners Court will now be in session. Move to public comment. We have one on there. Sheriff Keats next.
Good morning, Judge Commissioner. Just wanted to talk a quick bit about the motorcycle rally. Being told by the folks down at Chiny Wells that they did have about thirty thousand guests show up for that motorcycle rally. Saw some stuff on Facebook and that sort of thing, asking about reasons why we did some things. And so I just wanted to quickly run down it for you guys, just sort of ways in the loop. But we asked DPS to come. We had all of our deputies either on the road or staged somewhere near Chiny Wells. Know that the Constable's office had his people out, GPD had all their folks out. But we had an extremely large lawn four foot presence throughout the county. We asked Victoria County to bring their command trailer. Y'all probably saw that set up. We also asked Charlotte County to bring their command trailer. Like I said, we had all that stuff set up and our intent was we wanted to be extremely visible. We wanted everybody to be able to see us and know that if you want to go down there and create disorder or get drunk and drive on our streets and put our citizens in risk, chances are you're going to see one of us again. So just a very nice reminder to come down, have a good time, go home, and everybody be safe. Also worried about, you know, people maybe coming to our town or our county thinking that maybe, you know, all of our law enforcement will be down there at Chiny Wells. And now they got free reign to go out and steal and do things in the county. So again, we had a huge presence throughout the county. Our intent was to let them go down there, have a big time, go home, be safe, and keep all of our citizens safe. And, you know, I think it was successful. I think everybody had a good time. Everybody I talked to had a good time. But I know that that cost the county a lot of money. I know it was good for the city of Gonzales. I know they collected a decent amount of money from the event. But I just wanted everybody in the community to know why we had that presence out there. Again, I'm probably always going to be that guy that's prepared and takes it goes bad instead of trying to react once it went bad. So again, just trying to stay ahead of the curve and I think it was successful. And all of that is due to everybody's help. I mean, from the judge, all of y'all, everybody supported us. Everybody put in a lot of calories. I think it was a good event. Everybody had a good time going on. So I just wanted to make sure everybody kind of understand what our thinking was and why we were out there. Why, you know, if you wanted to travel with speed limit, chances are you probably don't talk to somebody. Because they were out, I mean, they were out working. So, but I appreciate it, Judge Commissioner.
Appreciate it, Sheriff. All right, it looks like that concludes public comment. Uh, moving to the consent agenda, uh, the following may be acted upon in, uh, one motion. A commissioner, uh, county judge, or citizen may request an item to be ruled for separate discussion in our action.
One motion we approved the, uh, the consent agenda.
Second, motion in a second to approve the consent agenda as stated. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries. We'll discuss and consider action on the following items. Number nine. Discuss with action hardware and software as a subscription agreement between Peacemaker Technologies LLC and the Gonzales County Constable's Office, Precinct Four.
Yeah, that's a new computer with a printer and everything. And when it is after replaced, my one of my units, the computer software is updated. And due to seizures, I am required to make sure that it's updated to the latest software. If it doesn't, then there's a problem. Might get into, uh, or something might get into the computer and then go into the system where DPS goes to. So that is a subscription for two thousand, uh, one thousand, nine hundred and fifty dollars. And the new computer is going to run about seven thousand and fifty. And that's going to be about, uh, a little bit less than eight thousand over four years. But if anything goes wrong with it, they replace it. And also the, uh, upward, the updates and everything, they take care of all that for me.
Is this something that we had on last year's budget item or is this something?
No, what I've been doing, I just buy one. But the way that everything gets updated all the time, the one I have there is still a good computer, but it came out. So I got, I got getting used because they went to Windows eleven. And I just went to a seminar and one of the questions they had was these and Windows ten. Several of them raised their hands and, well, you know, that's got to go. So I didn't want an update, so I got to get a whole new system. And that way, I think the, the computer, you get it, you got either a one year or two year warranty. That one, every year is good for four years.
And this is all through Peacemaker?
Through Peacemaker.
So just a yearly, ninety fifty a year?
It's fully covered. And it's a four year, uh, contract for four years.
So the total is going to be about eight thousand dollars for four years?
And the new computer alone is going to be like seventy five hundred dollars. That way, it's all covered no matter what.
And this is going in your car or the new car?
It's going to go into Jason's car now and then we're going to transport over to the neighborhood. Tony, a three hundred dollar fee would be stolen again.
When does it, is, when does this start? Like what's your contract?
He had it on the contract, I think, September first.
So this, this this year?
And I do have a warranty over there for it.
You do have what?
I do have a warranty in the contract.
Yeah, full budget management.
Yeah, no government, yeah. Well, part of, we live from one side to the other side, that's about it.
I move we approve the hardware and software subscription agreement between Peacemaker Technologies and Gonzales County Constable Office, Precinct Four.
Second, motion in a second, uh, for the hardware and software subscription agreement between Peacemaker Technologies and Gonzales County Constable, Precinct Four. Any further discussion? All in favor? All opposed? Motion carries.
Thank you, gentlemen.
Number ten, discuss with action renewal of county health and life insurance with Texas Association of Counties Health and Employee Benefits Group. Renewal date to be effective December first, twenty twenty five, uh, for the fiscal year twenty twenty six.
Good morning, ma'am. Um, what we have is we have renewed our medical and life insurance in the vision. Medical did go up, um, about forty one dollars per employee with our current plan. I sent y'all a price comparison, um, also. Right now, we're paying eight, eight hundred seventy seven dollars and eighteen cents per employee for just the medical. That doesn't include the life insurance. Um, if we stick with our current plan, as of December first, it will go up to nine hundred and nineteen dollars and eight cents per employee. There are two other options that we could go with to say, and we could still say grandfather in. Option one would be eight ninety four, forty eight an employee. The difference being is the deductible would go up and the office visit copay would go up and the prescription card copay would go up. The second option would be eight hundred sixty seven dollars and forty cents per employee a month. And again, the deductible would go up, office visit and prescription copay would go up for the employee. Our life insurance did not change, just staying at four dollars and twenty two cents per employee. So, and I'm how y'all want to, so I want to stick with the current plan. Here they get our pay. Um, forty one dollars and sixty cents more employee than we pay, what we're paying right now if we stick with the current plan.
Judge, do you have a problem with us passing on this and doing it in the budget? Can we do it in the budget? Hearing?
I don't have a problem with it.
Anybody else have a problem with it?
No.
And when we, when we go talk about budgets, we're going to make you see how much money we're going to have and where we might can do this round two. Y'all don't have a problem with that? I move that we, uh, hold up on item ten and discuss the doing of budget workshop.
Second. We're going to write it down, so we won't forget it.
Sir?
Who write it down, we're just going to forget it. All right, so we had a, a motion in a second to pass, uh, item number ten to the budget workshop. Any further discussion? All in favor? All opposed? Most for carry. Thank you. Hang around. Number eleven, discuss, uh, with action approval application for fiscal year twenty twenty six, U.S. Department of Justice State Criminal Alien Assistance Program, also known as SCAP, a SCAP grant. And that's a grant that we get every year depending on what we deal with, on, uh, folks that come in and out through the county jail. Depending, it varies. Sometimes it's more, sometimes it's less. But it's just, uh, money that comes into the county. Just got to apply far.
Well, I move we, uh, apply for the, uh, applica, go out and approve the application for financing year twenty twenty six of U.S. Department of Justice State Criminal Alien Assistance Program, SCAP.
Motion in a second for the approval of the, uh, fiscal year twenty twenty six, uh, SCAP grant. Any further, uh, discussion? All in favor? All opposed? Motion carries. Number twelve, discuss with action take home vehicle program, allowing assigned county vehicles to be taken into Jason County. Sheriff?
Uh, Judge Commissioners, uh, again, this is not our old policy. We can reinstate it. This is a new one that I think better, uh, affects Gonzales County or better sit, uh, fits our needs. What I'm asking for is permission for our deputies to live in the neighboring county to be allowed to take their vehicle home. I know our neighboring sheriffs all have very similar policies to this. And as y'all well know, it's, it's about hiring and keeping good employees. Had a huge turnover of seasoned deputies since this policy was changed back in twenty twenty three. I currently have an opening for a deputy and I wanted to reach y'all an email that I received on August the fifth, twenty twenty five. Basically, it says, Sheriff, the applicant has five years of experience in the Texas Peace Officer. His experience in working narcotics after all criminal investigations and highway interdiction. He currently holds an intermediate peace officer certification. Twenty seven years old, not married, no children. Currently lives in Victoria and is willing to move to Gonzales. He stated he's unable to find affordable housing here, so he'd have to move to Seguin. And that's the next closest location with affordable housing. His concern is with having to take home a vehicle due to not being able to find housing here in Gonzales County. And, uh, this was sent to me Tuesday, August the fifth by Sergeant Derek Romy. Like I said, it just goes to case the point why I'm asking for, why I'm asking for, again, for us to find, track, hire, keep good employees. It's just kind of a cost to do the business. I understand, you know, that we're all worried about the liability of these cars that walk and down the road. But again, the truth is, as you all well know, guys, everything that I do is a liability for the county. Whether it's my deputies, whether it's our jail, it's our vehicles, everything that I do is, is, is dealing with the public. And so it puts us, you know, all at risk. So, um, and, I mean, when you look at what's happened in, you know, say, Uvalde, you look at Kerrville, you know, no matter what I do, uh, folks, after the event's over, they'll have me in front of a jury of my peers, basically. When they've got hindsight, you know, I could have, would have, should have done whatever it might could be. And I'll have to, I mean, I'll be held accountable. I, that's just going to have to work. Just kind of sheriff. They're going to be looking for me for answers, like say, in Uvalde or in, you know, in Kerrville. There's a bunch of kids up there. Should the sheriff have done something better? And I'd say that there's always opportunity for us to do things different and better. So I guess at the end of the day, guys, I'm recording you guys. Let me be the sheriff. I want you to say you can see to the best of my ability. Just give me the tools necessary so that I can do that. So then I get the right people. It's a challenge out here getting good people and this is, I know it's an expense. But I see it as a cost to do the business. I've got, I just got to be able to get good employees. And you're hearing that from every department head in the, in the county. We need good people. And I'm, I'm competing against other counties that are giving them these take home cars. Again, I'm not opening it up for them to take them everywhere. I'm just if they live in the adjacent county that they can borrow. So I would really appreciate y'all's support.
Got a question for you, Sheriff.
Yes, sir.
How many, how many people do you have that would, with this, uh?
I'm, I'm sorry, Commissioner. I don't know exactly. I looked it up the other day and I'm thinking it was seven. I may be wrong, but I, I looked it up the other day, maybe seven or eight, if I'm not mistaken, that live in the adjacent county. And I, I, I can get you exactly that number.
Do you have any ideas, my other question, what the cost would be toward the county? And we talked about this earlier. What the cost would be for the county, for those vehicles every day going out of the county? Do you have a figure? I guess what I'm saying, do you have a figure what your mileage cost is on the vehicles?
What I did when this came up in twenty twenty three, I did the math back then. And it was about fifty to sixty thousand dollars a year in additional cost for the county. I haven't done it with my current employees because that number is changing, you know? But I, I did do it back then and it was between fifty and sixty thousand dollars. You know, but again, Commissioner, my, my thought would be that if I have to, I'll cut something else that, you know, I mean, because I, this is just something that I feel like I got at. You know, so I, I wasn't going to ask for more money in this year's proposed budget for it. You know, the budget that I presented, I would figure out a way to make that work.
And this is adjacent counties only?
Only.
So if, if an officer lived in Bear County, would they drive into the next county and leave it or would they just be?
They, they would not be out and participate, so their car would stay in the county. Yes, sir. That was my way of thinking. I mean, again, I don't see how, I mean, if somebody chooses to live in Bear County, that's kind of their choice. I think we've got enough affordable housing around Gonzales County that they could live close enough if they chose to. Yes, sir. But like I said, a Bear County deputy would have to leave this in county.
You know, they, they had taxpayers see them out of the county in another county and they get concerned about it. Then I had these guys come up to me over at Belmont, see all of the cars parked over. And I said, what the, you know, what, why are they just setting, y'all don't use those vehicles? So I don't know what you do with that, you know?
Yes, sir. It's, it's, I mean, it is. It, it, and again, I know that, uh, Commissioner Brzezinski and I had this conversation before, guys, but again, we don't know what we don't know, you know? But, but Gonzales, it's changed. Uh, the last flood that we had here that was bad, I saw something I've never seen before. This town was cutting half at four o'clock in the morning or whatever. It was absolutely cutting half. If you were on the east side, you couldn't get to the west side, you know? And so having these deputies have units out and about, they can still respond. You know, we had flooding when it happens like that down in, you know, down around the, we have it throughout the county when it rained with that. So having those units spread out throughout the county gives us the ability to respond from different places. But again, they may still not be in the right place to get to everybody. I, I, I don't know. But I just know that, yes, sir, that's, you know, it's, it's a concern.
So Sheriff, so if someone lives in, uh, say, DeWitt County, do you allow so many miles into DeWitt County or you got a cutoff point? I mean?
I was just, if they live in DeWitt, I, in this policy, I would allow them to take their unit home. Because by them having it home, guys, it, it gives them the ability to respond. And again, you know, depending upon what they do for us, they may or may not have to respond. You get a flooding event like Kerrville, anybody I can get to respond, I'm a woman here, right? We need them coming. So they'll be able to come. The other thing y'all need to always remember is these peace officers are a little bit different. They have a duty to act. If they see a felony being committed in their presence or view, they have a duty to act. Well, if we're asking them to act without their, some of their equipment, we're kind of hamstringing a little bit. And I mean, if, I mean, again, who knows what might happen? But if I got a deputy in DeWitt, he's driving to the school, they got a school shooting there? He can jump in and go to work, right? Again, we, we just don't know. And I don't know how you prepare for everything. And Gonzales County cannot afford to have everything that it would take to be prepared for everything. So we got to lean on our neighbors and help each other. And that's really why we use Victoria's venture. I don't have one. I don't have no one, but we don't. So we ask them to come and they bring it to us and have us. You know, but by having these deputies spread around, hopefully I have a deputy in the right spot when something goes really bad.
So when the deputy crosses the county line, would he be on duty or off duty? I think that's a question that. On duty or off duty? When they're driving home, will they get time to drive home or how does that work?
When I talk to the other sheriffs, judge, some of them pay them to go home. They basically, they start their shift at the point that they get in their car and all are on the radio that they're on duty. I have never done that. At the point that they leave Gonzales County, I've requested that they go off the clock. It's the way that I do it currently. If we need to have a different policy to make sure that we're in a better place with Gonzales County than that, I'm, I'm open to anything there. But I, I have historically said, when you live in Gonzales County, you go off the clock.
So if you live thirty minutes out, forty five, and you're cutting this county short, hour and a half, two hours, everything?
Being in the county.
Okay, going to work, coming, going to or coming from?
Right.
The way we do it, Commissioner, so, you know, I mean, I said, I got to start at six, end at six. So at six o'clock is when he'll be leaving Gonzales County. And he, so he's, he was, he was in the county for the whole twelve hours, ready for here, shoot.
So he'd be traveling all this long time.
I guess one of the questions I had, like Commissioner Teas, if, if he lived in, say, the outside, you know, on the Bear County and Guadalupe County line, you're talking it's thirty two miles there and probably another twenty or thirty miles where he's going to live. So you're talking sixty, so that's a hundred and twenty miles round trip, correct?
I, I'm sorry, I'm not that familiar with how far Guadalupe County goes west.
Yeah.
But I know it does go, go west. It doesn't stop in Seguin. I, I know.
And like DeWitt County, it'd be worse, you know, because it goes almost not too far out of Goyet. So you're talking a hundred to a hundred and twenty miles of traffic, traffic. And, uh,
You know, but again, that's where they, where they live, you know? So like in DeWitt, I mean, they put out some property out in DeWitt County. But if he's going to live in DeWitt County, chances are he's going to live around where? You know, and again, it's not always going to be the case, Commissioner, that if you don't really live anywhere, it definitely won't be. And again, it's not always gonna be the case, Commissioner, that if you don't really live anywhere in the county, everyone will live there. But then, you know, most of them will live around the city.
Thirty miles, it's just, you know, it's all over, but you put it to the highway.
Well, you know, you know, I know the sheriff, he needs to have a car, he needs to be available twenty-four hours. I know the chief fifty needs to have a car. I know your jailer, they're on call, though. Your head jailer, or whatever you call him now, they're on twenty-four hour call, they need to have a car. And I would think your, uh, chief investigator, probably, I would, I don't have a problem with those four. But when you go to going out of town like that, out of the county, I have a problem with that. I always have, you know?
Yes, sir, I do.
It, my part is, is the safety of the people, but also is what it costs the, costs the taxpayer. Because that's what we're sitting here to this morning, we're gonna be going over this budget. So that's my thoughts on it.
Well, I can assure you, Commissioner, that we spend a lot of money hiring deputies and training deputies. Which, we did, we spend a lot of money doing that. And I mean, I've got a really young department right now, because I've lost all of my guys every season, then they went somewhere where they had, you know, my better unit.
I knew we were probably gonna have this problem. We let Jimmy, I'm gonna beat Jimmy, you know, he set up a little device, I'm closing, I'm gonna win. When we let Jimmy take his thought on, but he's kind of an unusual situation. He's a man of many, many hats in, uh, you know, in fire marshal. Be no different than you, you're in charge of all your people, you need to have a car all the time, too. But I...
Commissioner, we have a murder in, well, a heart with the other day. And I mean, I brought everybody that I had, all the investigators were there, you know? I mean, we, you know, we have a murder down in Nixon, uh, Kinsanet or whatever, one night. I mean, we called all of those folks in, because, I mean, we, we had several hundred people to interview, you know? So, I mean, we're, we're bringing a lot of folks in. Do we do it every day? No, sir, but, but we do. And I, I understand it's an expense to the county, but it is something that, that, I mean, I gotta have the best and brightest employees. I'm struggling together, so I've gotta open today, and I've got a young man to fill it. But if we don't have take home vehicles, it's gonna need to be an obligated liar.
If you're saying that you're not asking for additional funds to be added to the budget, you're gonna make, do with what you currently have?
That's a hundred percent what I'm saying, yes, sir. I'll, I'll, I'll cut something else. Sheriff, what's not proposing that we alter my budget to allow this to happen?
I'm sorry, insurance, Sheriff, don't cover, if we got a deputy in another county and he's doing all the duty or whatever going on.
What my guy's name with PAC, Darren, Darren Jackson. What, what Darren told me is that, I mean, that they're covered, because it's in a county vehicle, you know? So that county vehicle is covered by the county, whether he's on duty or off duty, according to Darren was. That affects the employee, but it doesn't affect the county. I mean, they're still allowed, we're still...
I was told something different. I was told that we have to prove that they have to be on duty in order for some coverage for workers' comp. I'm not talking about vehicle, I don't know about vehicle, but workers' comp, they have to be on duty in order for workers' comp to be covered. The problem that we're gonna have is, is like what Sheriff is saying, is technically, they see something, they have to go and investigate it. So it's gonna be up to workers' comp whether they're gonna cover them or not. If something does happen, then that's scope. I can't say yes, they will, or no, they won't. I know what Mr. Jackson told him, but when I talked to workers' comp myself, they said it's, it's gonna be up to them to decide on whether they want to cover them or not, just depending on what they were doing and what we say. And that's, I think, if y'all approve it, we're gonna have to know the hours, like what Shawna was saying, the hours, kind of like where they're gonna cover them from. What time do they get home, are we gonna cover them, um, time wise? Or it, it, there's gonna be a lot of different factors in there, whether they come workers' comp. It's not gonna be a black and white situation, depending on the area they're in there, to where I know, I can't say for sure that they aren't wanting to be covered. We're just not talking to workers' comp.
Well, when the Commissioner asked the question, I thought you were asking about the vehicles, vehicle covered or not? And that's, that's what I was responding to. You know, with the employee, whether they're home or off the clock, with permanent, I guess, whether they get work comp or not. But again, I don't know how that works, because if he has to respond to something, he's doing his job.
That's the gray area comes in.
I'm thinking he's gonna, he ought to be covered if he's doing his job.
Well, I didn't know, that's the reason I asked the question.
Yes, sir. But what he, like with their vehicles, it doesn't change. The vehicles, insurance and all that stays exactly the same, it doesn't matter whether you're on duty or off duty.
They're not even precedent set with that work in comp that they go by or any kind of...
And he said, just imagine when I turn in, and if he say, okay, say, he gets off at six, he goes into a car dealership, or six AM, six PM. He goes home and he gets in, got a bit of a wreck at seven PM, but we're saying he works from six to six, and that's gonna be at the segue, whether they approve it or not, saying that, yes, he was on duty, was he responding to a call, was he just going home? That's where the gray area comes in, that they're gonna give me a, yes, or they said, no, it would not be covered. But then they also came back, they said, well, there are also gonna be some gray areas to where, just depending on how we put it in our report and what we're saying that their, their, their time schedule is. If we're gonna say until they get home, then yes, they'll be covered. But if we're gonna say, no, say, yeah, I work at six PM, we're not gonna cover them on the way home, but yet they get your wreck. It's gonna be on us to prove that whether he was going to call, he was on duty, and they can be, like he says, we are on duty, I guess, twenty-four seven, and he has to respond. If they see something, because we don't know how they're going home, but they're gonna see a wreck, what they see...
But, but that could happen in county, out of county, that's regardless. Anyone could clock out at the sheriff department, and they'd be taken, they'd be home, have that same...
Right.
So basically, it deals, it comes down to how, how you present the case to workers' comp.
And then we have to say, whether they went to the workers' comp, we're saying, no, that they're not gonna cover it. I would have to put on, yes, they were on duty, or no, they weren't on on duty. And then it would go back to him saying, well, he was responding to something, but yet we did go off the clock. That, that's where the gray area comes in, that they said.
So just, you know, saying, Frank, I'm saying, if an officer was going home, he clocked out, but then something happened. Does he automatically clock in, or have you paid for that app? How does, how do y'all currently handle that?
Well, because we, those guys do not hit a time clock, right? So they, they turn in a time sheet. So if something like that happened, he's, he's, you know, he's...
It's extended time.
Yes, sir. If he intended to be off the clock and was headed home, and now all of a sudden we're calling and saying, hey, I need you to go to fresh in ten, then he just goes off duty when he gets done. Yes, we, we don't actually, you know, we don't have to go to the sheriff's office to clock in or clock out. They do it on a written time sheet. And honestly, we, we compare that to what they actually work on. And we know, you know, and we know when they log on their computer, when they log all of this.
So I could also recommend that they, uh, policy to put the scope and assign job duties. So if something did happen, we would have a policy to go by, what's kind of, what are their duties? Even traveling like with the vehicle, you're saying that off duty at six? I think Darren Jackson said he could help with that.
Yeah, absolutely. I just know that Darren was reacting like it's, it's very common. Most, most of the sheriff's offices around us do very, something very separate. I know I talked to Sheriff Josh Loray in Guadalupe County. He does it different in that basically, the point that they report for duty, no matter where they're reporting from, they're only clocked. And when they report off duty, no matter where they're at, there, that's when they go off the clock. He doesn't clock in and clock out at the point that they report for duty. But he doesn't care where they really are when they report for duty.
I'm just worried about that liability. If they had something real bad happen and been out of the other way, you know?
On, on Jimmy's behalf, on merge management coordinator, and so how does his, your time run from home to Gonzales, Gonzales back home? And how's your?
No, sir.
How's your?
The way I do it is, is that when I hit the county line, it's when my, I write on my time sheet. When I hit the county line going home, I write on my time sheet with one exception. If I get called in after hours, when I get in my truck at my house, I clock in in service, because that's additional to my clock hours. And then when I get home from a fire, three in the morning, I clock out. That's how I do it. Because I get called to dispatch from the house. But during regular daytime, during my regular shift, I start from here to camp.
Like Constable Paul mentioned, I mean, we're doing it today, guys. I mean, if, if a deputy or constable is going to training or whatever, they may take that vehicle home, and they're not technically on the clock, you know? And then they're going from there to training. So, I mean, again, again, we do a lot, you know?
It's an easy mission. Like going to school, going to training.
Again, if I, the way that works, guys, is if I miss something and something comes back to bite us, I'll be the one that W P Krustine, you bet. But I, I just gotta have good employees. I don't know how else to tell y'all, I gotta have good people. If I don't have good deputies, this job is much harder to do, and this is a cost to doing business. And I, I understand it's a cost, but it is a cost to doing business. And all my, all my sheriffs around me, that's what they do. They lie on to take them home. I'm sure they take better care of them, too. You know, I mean, they're responsible for their car, they take it home, they, they take better care of them.
They won't be there, no.
They're not being bought, man.
Do you guys do any moonlighting?
No, sir. I mean, they don't have to work off duty. Well, we don't allow them to work off duty outside of Gonzales County currently. We've got OLS funds, so if they want to work an off duty job, they're working OLS in our county. You know, we don't allow them currently. But I mean, if I lose OLS funds or something, but again, they wouldn't be taking their car to that. I mean, now, if they're working off duty in Gonzales County, then yes, sir, they bring their car to that. You know, if they're working off duty something here, security or something, we ask them to bring their car to that. But if they're working off duty something outside of the county, they don't take their car. They have to go in their own personal vehicle. And all of those vehicles are tracked, guys. We know, I, I can assure you that we know. Yeah, I can go back and tell you, if anybody did anything like that, that's gonna be their law. It's just we don't allow it.
How the DPS tracker, they have to be there, they're, how the DPS, they take them home?
Well, their vehicles, they, they just changed over the years, but the thing about DPS is they have statewide jurisdiction, so they have a fifty mile radius now that they have to live within fifty miles of their duty station. So it used to be twenty, when they went to thirty, now it's a fifty. But the thing about it is, when they go to work, they can start working.
Then they drive out of the drive, but then they work, it's a statewide.
They would have someone to discuss.
No, they're assigned to a county. Now, you may, you may be assigned to a county, and then they assign you to the border. So you, you work your way all the way down and all the way back into the state jurisdiction.
But Judge, Commissioner, I mean, that's nuts, if they went from twenty miles to fifty, why did they do that? They didn't do that because they wanted to, because that's what they have to do, they hired the track good troopers. And they supposedly got approved for four hundred new troopers. I don't know where they're gonna go from.
They may be, because they, they can work a greater area, and they can get by with less people there, too. That might have been a reason.
I, I mean, and obviously, Jeff was a trooper for years, so he can tell us, but, but the troopers that I've got in Gonzales County, they, there's some of them that live over in New ProvincIAL area. They don't work any traffic, but they get back to them both down. That commute from here to there, all the way there, head down and driving home. When they get in that car, they're driving back here before they go back to work. Now, I mean, though, if they see a murder or something going on, they're gonna jump into it.
They still have the authority to.
Yep, same as we do. We're all Texas peace officers, all pretty similar.
Other thing with DPS two, yeah. The other thing with DPS two is, I mean, you pick your station. If you don't like the station, you can move to another one, but you don't have much choice if you're stationed there. You're there for at least, uh, at least the duration of the time that you are on probation, or whatever the case may be. Or till somewhere comes open that you can put in for, depending on the time when you can get it, sir. What they did, they went from twenty to fifty miles, that has, that has increased.
And that's from your duty station, where your DPS office actually is?
From the DPS office to the, to your residential.
Is it a cross flash, Judge, do you know, or is it have a driving miles?
I, no, it's a, it's straight lines.
It's like every mile.
If all I know is, but it's changed, but I'm pretty sure that that's where it is, it's straight.
I mean, that's easier to manage, you know? You're a real draw, sort of, right? You gotta be in here.
You know, because you have a nowhere, you have a black one there. You know, and I don't wanna pick on Jimmy, but I mean, same thing, you're gonna run up and down, and you may make one call a month, or two calls, but I mean, you're gonna run a vehicle up and down as well. So that's, I believe that's where we're getting the return question all the time, on results as well. All the way out, I want.
Yeah, the other thing that Chief mentioned, guys, is, I mean, I got one deputy that lives in Moulton, right? So I mean, we're thinking that they all live thirty, I mean, like I said, we got one that lives in Moulton, and he can't take a vehicle home today. He's, what, just a few miles out of our county. I, you know what I'm saying? I mean, they live all over the place, but, but I know Manon Tunnel lives in Moulton, you know? So it's, it's kind of a mixed bag. But again, at the end of the day, I'm gonna be looking at where they live, and allowing whether they can or they can't. I would like for the policy to say, again, the neighboring county. But, you know, I mean, if you got a guy that lives sixty miles from here, probably not somebody that we won't allow to take their car home, you know? That's still at my discretion, you know?
A mile restriction. Ten miles outside, twenty miles outside. Look, oh, like a mile's restriction? Or if a deputy lived in, say, Guadalupe County, once he arrived in Guadalupe County, he then went through Gonzales County, he's in Guadalupe County, would there be a, a area like fire department or EMS station or sheriff's department that he could park that vehicle at?
Uh, surely we could, Commissioner, but my thought was, again, because now he's not...
He's gonna unload that car.
He already did that one time, didn't he? Didn't they park?
Yes.
We did that in the phase before.
Yes, sir.
Yeah, we've, we've done that.
Oh, y'all have, oh, okay.
And I mean, that's not a bad solution, but to y'all's point, he still has to unload all his, you know, he can't leave his guns in there, computers in there and all that stuff. So, you know, so, again, my thought was, again, it's kind of a happy medium, maybe, that they have to live in that neighboring county to get this privilege. If they don't, the car stays here in Gonzales County. And I don't, I may have one exception to that, that where that would be, they'll have to bring it home. Uh, two, I think. I think Deputy Powell, I'm not sure. Deputy Powell lives more than one county over, and Deputy, um, Sumner lives in Bear or somewhere over there. So those two would not be allowed to do it. They'll have to, their cars will have to stay here, stay in Gonzales County. So they have to live in that county to get the privilege. I, I wish they all lived in Gonzales County, that's what I would, yeah, that's what, that's what we would all allow them, right?
It's not costing any additional money. I mean, it will cost additional money somewhere, because it's gonna be additional miles, it's just not gonna cost any additional... because it's gonna be additional miles, it's just not gonna cost any additional budget.
Not a budget, yeah.
Bottom line, budget.
I'd just like to know the number of cars we got going out of county, I'd like to know the cost. You ought to be able to put a good, Sheriff, you ought to be able to put a, you know, what your cars are costing a mile to run them. We ought, you ought to be in the deputies you got that are gonna be out, how far they're traveling.
Yes sir.
We ought to have a cost figure. Because I know what you say, it's not gonna cost us any extra money in the budget, but it's gonna cost us extra money. You know, you got wear and tear on the tires, you got wear and tear on the car. And I mean, I know we need the help, and I know we need to have the safety for our people, but us sitting here at this table, we'll have to worry about the money part of it too. So at least we're not telling the sheriff, we don't have enough money, you gotta cut three deputies or cut two deputies, you know, and I hope you appreciate that fact.
I, I appreciate y'all's perspective, Commissioner, that's all I do.
They will table it, check into the liability and everything, and get keep, bring that back next two weeks or week when they come back.
We're not gonna do this.
And make sure.
And just kinda keep kicking this.
Kicking in rock.
Looks like there's eight.
Yeah, eight, okay.
Four that live further, but eight that live in adjacent counties. I haven't verified that, but that's.
So there's only four that we would be putting on this program with our numbers, right?
That would not be on the program.
Well.
Eight that live adjacent, four that live further.
Oh, I'm moving that, okay.
So you know there's eight?
That's what I was just, I had to move that.
Now, it says eight plus four, four, eight, and it's four that live further and four that live.
No, there's eight.
Twelve out of county.
Correct.
Eight, they could do it.
Eight adjacent.
Four that are not.
We on.
The, the only problem with that is, that's their mailing address that she was looking at.
Yes, so I don't, whenever we have a computer.
So you know, that's their mailing address, that may not be where they live.
Right.
Because I know we had that problem with Whitlow, he had still added that address down to Refurio.
Right.
And the assumption was maybe he'd drive into Refurio, now he actually lives in Flatonia, but he had made an address for Refurio.
And they don't update that, so we have no idea.
Right.
Just by what we have.
I'm assuming, I knew, I knew it was somewhere in that six days range, but I was, I couldn't.
Sure.
Okay, so. They've responded back, and to our, our numbers, they're saying that there is a that live in the adjacent county, and actually three would not be able to participate. I knew Sumner, I knew, uh, Powell, but there must be a third. Oh, it's a new one. Have you seen it? I said Encio, 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 so there's actually three.
So there's eleven, but only eight in adjacent county.
Yes, only eight would be able to participate. Yes, so the, so the math then, Commissioner, is gonna be very similar where we work, and I think that number, it may actually be a few less than we worked before, because I know we lost between you and Whitlow, there was a handful. But, so that, it's gonna be in that fifty, sixty thousand dollar budget.
Okay.
So I guess I was going already out, we had a motion for a table to check on costs and insurance, but I never got seconded.
Table at the next meeting or for the budget, this budget session, or? I think they said to the next meeting, it was a motion.
Next meeting, until you get the information.
Yeah, you check into it, get NCA, whoever we need to talk to, find out, it'll be the eighteenth.
Well, table, table, tell the next meeting for the more information. All right.
Thank you, Sheriff.
Any further discussion? All in favor? All opposed? Thirteen, uh, set sheriff and constable fees.
I guess, Judge, Commissioner, uh, as y'all probably recall, we proposed, uh, keeping our fees the same, except adding the fee for the AAs, I think, and I think the concern from the court was that y'all maybe wanted to not charge them, uh, if they lived in the county versus if they lived outside of the county, and I think, talked to Eddie about being able to do that, and I think Eddie and I were saying, that's right bad business.
Yeah, you came to, you look, you got a problem.
Which is that?
That would be the fee for the, uh.
It's counted at the bottom.
Yeah.
Sixty-eight A, I'm sorry, sixty-eight A.
Sixty-eight dash eight.
Okay, that's flexible.
Vehicle inspections.
Vehicle inspections. You still wanna leave it the same without the new?
So you're saying it'll be charged forty-five to everybody or not charged anything? I don't know, did you sign, did you?
Then don't add the forty-five? Got a motion?
Yes sir.
Second. Got a motion in the second to, uh, leave the sheriff and constable fees for twenty twenty-six the same, uh, with the exception of not adding the new, which is the VT R sixty-eight vehicle inspection. Any later? All in favor?
Uh-huh.
All opposed? Motion carried. Fourteen, discuss with, uh, action optional road and bridge fees, the tax assessor collector.
The state just needs to know if you wanna keep your optional road and bridge fees at ten dollars for the registrations.
Yeah, you think that's all right?
Of course.
I'm moving the fees at ten dollars.
All right, second.
All right, motion, in a second, uh, to keep the road and bridge fees at the tax assessor collector's office the same. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Uh-huh.
All opposed? Motion carried. Number fifteen, discuss considering possible action on revisiting the previous decision made by the Commissioners Court on September the third, twenty twenty-four concerning the county policy that authorizes health insurance coverages and all the monthly stipends of three hundred dollars to former employees, uh, officials, uh, post-retirement in Gonzales County. Uh, we put this on here because we had discussed it in budget workshop, and this was the one that the outside auditor, uh, basically told us that that's something that we probably shouldn't have done, that we did. I think in the last budget workshop, we were all, uh, pretty much unanimous on, uh, on the decision of going away with it, but we never actually had a official vote, uh, to, to declare that, because we didn't vote on it in budget workshop, we just discussed it. So it would be open for discussion and consideration. And again, there's twenty-six people that it benefits when we have a hundred and seventy all the time. Is that correct, Eddie, that said right?
Yes.
Okay, I'm gonna make sure. So it's basically in the policy, we would have to change the policy or even actually take it out, to take it out.
Do we have a policy changed yet, or we have to start it on?
Well, we've got there, but yeah, it just depends on what the board, the court decides, so then we can go from there.
And that was the liability that the, all of the.
Yeah.
They said it's the wrong liability that.
Well, I know when it was first brought to attention, uh, that's the first thing I did, was called the outside auditor, and he was like, that is a horrible idea. And he had a bunch of different questions that he had asked, and, and at the time, we had a different auditor, so I only had auditor to call, to talk to him, and apparently she called and talked to him, but it wasn't the same results at the time, but then, you know, we had our audit this year, and I asked him about it, and he said that he would have mentioned it to y'all, he was elaborating a lot on it, but he said it's not a good idea. He said, because it's something that you're gonna be stuck with, uh, forever. And if there's more people that retire, then you're gonna be stuck with that continuously. And really, if you look at it, by the time you tax it, the headache that your office and everybody else has to go through to get it to where it's got to go, I mean, my deal is, is if, if we were able to give retirees something, it would be great to give all of them, not just a very select few. Years that we would, uh, have money, you know, give them all just a stipend or something yearly that, you know, to give, give to them.
Wonder why the auditor, well, I guess you wouldn't, because we didn't really, from the twenty-third, I mean, September third of twenty twenty-four, I was wondering why getting ranked up before, but we just started. I didn't know.
But it's a, it is a liability to the county forever.
You could mess with our bond rating too.
Oh yeah, it does affect your bond rating, so if you got to go out and try to get some bonds and go build a jail or whatever, it affects it. It, it affected our other rating, we were a minus, we would have probably been a lot higher if we would not have had that. So that's a negative impact on us, if, if that, if more people continue to get on it and that grows, then if you're gonna need something in the future, that's gonna be a negative for the county going out to try to get approved for bonds.
So like our, make our interest rates go up, or?
Well, that or don't get approved. Because they look at it as a guaranteed liability that, that you're gonna have to go and review anything else, which is.
Kind of like when you borrow money and ask if you're a co-signer on any other note. With that liability, even though you borrowed the money, you are a co-signer.
Makes sense, yeah. Same, same.
So how did this, uh, three hundred dollars for some of the retirees come about and then some did qualify? Since I'm not aware of it, I mean.
I mean, it, it was something that was presented, uh, I think initially, looking at doing a COLA, which is a cost of living adjustment, that if you actually did an actual COLA, it would affect your, for fifteen years, that, that it, before you could actually get that paid off. So that's, that's a liability too, but it goes off in fifteen years.
It's a bigger liability than this COLA deal, I would think.
Yeah, but it goes away in fifteen years. This other one is, is for life. So, they, I guess they were trying to do what was best to get everybody something, but it only affected twenty-six people because it depended on how many years of service you had, how long you were there, and this. So you have a bunch of people that were still there, but it only applied to twenty-six. And it was brought, brought forth, and, uh, I tried to do some, some, uh, studying into it, and that's when I started making phone calls, because I didn't think it was a great idea for, because of the liability for how long it would be. But anyway, with that being said, it got.
The court could always stop it.
They could always stop it, yes, they could always stop it, but it got passed, and it went on, and, uh, then of course, we see that when we go out for that tax note, it was, uh, affecting that. Uh, and it's just something that I just, I'm, I'm the type of person that I'd like to be out for everybody, not just a select few. Not taking a gift, not taking anything away from anybody else, but I mean, we do have a hundred and seventy retirees on, on the books, and it's just something that, um.
So this was done in September?
It went to affect October first.
It went to, yeah, it went to affect October first.
October first. And it's not straight across the board?
No. And there are still other folks that would be eligible for it that can come up and retire, and once they do it, then you're just gonna be adding to the pocket. You're gonna keep adding to it as long as they're here, then you're gonna have that, that's gonna go on forever.
Unless you repeal it.
Unless you repeal it.
And that's taxed, so what, what is like a net benefit, what is this, out of the three hundred that the retiree get?
What's a net benefit he said out of the three hundred that the retiree would get?
Oh, I don't know, I don't think it's taken out, they get taxed on it.
They get taxed on it.
But I was told by a couple of retirees that when they received it, they didn't understand what it was, and then they went to do their taxes in their account, or whoever asked, what is this? And they couldn't explain, it can't be considered income, so then.
Yeah, that's true, I forgot about that though.
It becomes a tax liability on their part, which granted, this, this time around, it was just for what, three months?
Yes, yeah, this next.
Yeah, the CPA said, this is not a good deal too, I forgot, there was a couple of CPAs that called the office and said, this makes absolutely no sense.
So they're getting.
They're ten ninety-nine.
Yeah.
They're getting the full three hundred, but then at the end of the year, they have to pay, pay the taxes.
Taxes.
Wow.
I guess, sixty dollars. Someone told you. So you're living two hundred? Two hundred and forty dollars, you're getting for everybody?
Well, at the end of the year, they got.
You, you. As long as it stays on my name at the end, I'm gonna retire in five months. Hey, you hate to take that three hundred away from guys, you know? But if they're not getting it across the board, I don't even know why it was put in there.
That's why I asked.
That doesn't make any sense.
I understand.
Well, if you've been here. And I know they fix to retire, but I'm just looking over the top.
But let me tell you this, when you've been here twenty years, you're gonna realize you made some mistakes down the road.
Well, it's, it's, it's not a big, I mean, it's something that passed, it's something.
I made some mistakes, don't get me wrong.
Well, I already know about all your mistakes, besides now that you're ten.
Well, we're gonna keep doing this.
All right, Pat, you have something to say?
No, I, no, I'm not, I'm not in the middle, y'all too. I'm just, I'm just saying, it's something that, 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 that was put into place that can be corrected. It's not a big deal, we've all, we've, we've talked about it.
At least be corrected.
Well, I think now we have hindsight of knowing how many actually were able to benefit or, or participate, now that we know.
How many issues we got?
Telephone calls after this is done too.
Well, that's fine, but the thing about it is, 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 I mean, I've been, always been for everybody, not just the select, select few or whatever time you had, I mean, if you put ten, fifteen years in this county, you, you work for the county. And if you were able to retire and draw a retirement check, I think you're still part of the county, but, yeah, anyway. I just don't want anything negative in the future for the county, for it to be something on bonds or tax notes or anything else. It's, it's a, it's a, it's a definite liability is what it is. Definite guaranteed liability, because you're gonna have to pay that. So I know, and I see like last time, my boy put it in there too, depending on what the budget looked like, but that got taken out. You know, that, you know, maybe one year we could do it, but, but when they, when they took that out, then we're stuck with it for life, not.
No, we're not stuck with it.
No, 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 unless, unless you do what we're doing now. But we were stuck with it till there was any more action taken. But if we would have had that in there depending on if we have enough money, like we've got some bills this year, everybody knows that, we might not have been able to do it this year, but without that clause in there, we gotta pay.
So as the employee retires, where does this three hundred come from? I mean, where do you pull that out?
This three hundred?
General.
General fund?
Out of general funds then? Well, I mean, I.
Yeah, no, good question.
And if we don't, if we change this policy, would it be effective immediately, or would it go to end of October, depending?
Yeah, so I was saying, you just do it through October the first.
Just do this fiscal year and start over next year?
I don't wanna leave it a liability for anybody else to come to, unless they wanna change their own. But we have a lot of people on retirement, so they're not all meant to. I think there were some that were real, real close to it that still didn't, weren't able to get it. I mean, they were just a couple of months out, you know, and it's like, you're not getting it because you didn't have this X amount of time.
Four and one over that, I forgot the time, but I'm not old enough.
Yeah, she got the time, but she wouldn't.
Yeah, I wouldn't qualify because I'm not old enough.
Boy, we're gonna change that, he told me, we talked to him, one check at least.
Change what is changing, son.
Me? I was there for it in the first place. Other than if there were gonna be a, all hundred and seventy employees, then I'd have been for that.
Hmm.
And you know, the thing, when you go to work for the county, I mean, you know what the benefits are, you know what your retirement's set at already. Same thing as me with the state, I retire with the state, and then guys gotten raises and everything else, they're gonna get a whole lot more money now, but I'm, I'm content, I'm happy, because I knew what I started with.
Did the state ever do anything like this? Did the state ever do anything like this?
The state would never do anything like this. In fact, you know, the times and the limits that we set on this, we were setting it low when everybody else is going higher, higher. So a rule of eighty was what it used to be the primary thing, that by the time your age and your service time hit eighty, then you're good to go. Well, what happened is, is everybody, the court wanted to make it less than eighty, which means less time and less age, while everybody else, the state and everybody else is going above eighty. You're telling me to bite now? Well, they asked the question. I'm just trying to explain it.
It's been about a year ago. You didn't look for, I guess everybody didn't look forward what it's gonna turn out like, you know?
I had an idea, I, I had an idea what it was gonna be, but I didn't have much say. I just like, it's just not, it's not gonna be feasible.
So the, not our auditor, but the outside auditor is the one that picked it up?
Yes. And I asked our other auditor to call. Apparently she says she did. I don't think she really did. But, because I asked, I asked Mr. Vaughn and says she visited with him, but not in the manner of the way she probably should have visited, but she didn't get the answer. Yeah.
So what's it costing us now? Sean? How much is it costing us now?
It's around eighty-six thousand.
A year?
Yeah.
And how many people are getting it?
Twenty-six.
Uh, I think it may be less because there's a couple that have never responded back to us.
Oh, that we're supposed to get it, but they're not getting it?
Yeah, because we couldn't, uh, find.
She has another thing, can't find everybody.
And then one of them has, I know one for sure has.
So there's twenty-four out of twenty-six.
Getting eighty-six now.
Who would have said eighty-six thousand?
And if you have some more that retire and you have another twenty-six, then you're looking at a hundred and seventy-two thousand. And that's every year.
Keep going.
Keeps going.
So what do you, you just wanna do?
Well, I'm gonna tell you. Y'all gave these retirees three hundred a month. And it's eighty-six thousand a year. And I didn't vote on that, but, uh, and I don't wanna take this away from the employees. I wouldn't, I wouldn't want you to take it away from them. But I don't see any way out of it.
Of what?
Of not doing it.
Of not doing it?
Yes, sir.
You mean doing away with it?
Yes. I mean, because I mean eighty-six thousand and you're not giving in the rest of them anymore.
And the thing about it is, guys, is this year's a rough year because we got a lot of buildings and everything going on. But that's not saying in the years ahead, we're gonna be back to where we need to be. And we can make some decisions for these retirees. I, I don't have any problem with it.
And I don't wanna speak against you on this, but I know you think you can retire, but my God. If all of them are getting three hundred, it'd be different.
Well, get rid of everybody else and give me five more.
I'm gonna, I'm gonna catch it on both ends.
I know you are.
That phone will be burned up. I mean, it's rolling on July.
Sorry. That's what you can pay what we've got for.
Don't you remember you used to be in a maintainer? You could just glide down the road.
Nobody, nobody bothered you.
Nobody bothered you. Now that's all over.
We done moved on, had one.
So what do y'all wanna do?
Well.
Charlie, how you feel?
I'm kinda the same way. It's feeling, you know, we're benefiting a few people. Like that money could be spent a lot more wisely to benefit everybody. Put our heads together and come up with something that would be a little more beneficial for everybody.
Well, that's a shame. It hadn't been a year yet and we're, here we are on this.
But now we got hindsight and you gotta track.
But you couldn't, you couldn't change it because the budget's once a year. So once it's set, it's good for the year. That's why I would change in October. And once it passed, I knew I could not ever address it again until this year.
Are you looking at.
Because it's, it's through the budget, so you'd have to do it.
Were you all right, Crystal? You don't care?
I'm perfect with finding.
I'm sure there's gonna be other things we're gonna cut.
Well.
You know, you just can't make everybody happy all the time. You just got, you got, you got to do the best you can for the job. But I'm, I'm looking at the fact that that's a liability on this county that when I'm gone, that they'll still have unless they change that.
So Judge, may I ask, no precedent to the original item to be, to be considered, where did it come from?
I think, I think it's Kevin's. Kevin, was it Kevin? But I, I mean, not saying, not saying it's a bad idea, it just.
The future outlook on this deal was a whole deal. We wouldn't be talking about it, you know?
Yeah.
I think because of insurance or something had been up for the retirees or something and they were trying to offset that for the retirees. But no one else, I, I can't speak for everyone. My husband and I retired, he paid for the notes for our insurance. My husband worked forty-five years for a company. They didn't, they don't come in and give us additional monies to pay for our insurance. So, you know, this does not sound like it's too long. And that's, again, if the auditor says this is a no, you know, this should not happen. I'm not sure why there's, there's such a delay in coming to a decision, uh, about the eighty-six thousand dollars. When, when, you know, quizzing the sheriff about, you know, what he's trying to do to, to bring in some qualified additional staff for all of our protection, um, he's not adding to the budget. He's gonna struggle to try and find that money somewhere. And yet we're handling over, you know, twenty-six individuals getting a three hundred dollar amount. You know, yes, they have even clarity at the end of the year and all that good stuff, but I don't understand why we're taking up essentially a forty amount of time when the answer is clear and simple. Cut it.
Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am.
Any further discussion?
Any further discussion? Leave a discussion. I'll entertain a motion.
It sounds like what, what the consensus is, I, I think we should, uh, remove the health insurance coverage, monthly stipend of three hundred dollars for our county employees and officials.
Do I have a second? I'll second it. All right. So I have a motion and a second for the three hundred dollars, uh, to remove the three hundred dollars for the, the, uh, I guess it's the post-retirement benefit. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Roy?
I'm gonna sit out on this one.
Donna?
No, I might probably leave the lawn, but that's okay. I've got three votes.
We got three ayes.
What about the insurance part of it, the retiree insurance that, depending, depending on insurance?
Yeah, that was another thing that we're continuing to have to pay. They're, they're actually paying it. I thought, was that in part of it or that's?
It was also part of the same policy.
Yeah, so then that, 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 that was, that was, that, that does it. But then we have the next one here.
Discuss, number sixteen is discuss and consider possible action on having Gonzales County Auditor remove or or retain a line item for the health insurance for the stipend of three hundred dollars for former county employees post-retirement in Gonzales. So basically if we pass that policy, then she would just have to take it out. Do we need to proceed on that number sixteen?
I didn't hear the question.
So.
We have the line item?
Yeah.
The item here doesn't really talk about the dependence.
So remember what you're saying is, in, comes September thirty, if that line.
Yeah, but when we get a policy, then.
Yeah, so is six, sixteen saying that since we passed that, then that line item comes out of budget? Do we still have to vote on that one? I'm lost.
Well, because the line item exists now. I mean, is it, if, if it automatically drops off, we change the policy in the end?
Yes, yeah. October first, I mean, that's when it comes to fact, it, it won't wait.
Okay, that's my question.
So we're good on sixteen to roll on?
I think so. It's not coming out now. I mean.
No, it'll come out till the end.
Get the policy in the.
Long as we're good with that.
Have to pass that policy.
Thirty, that line item.
Yeah, fix that policy. Maybe Monday they'll come back with that policy.
Well, it really won't be a policy. It'll just be removed, the whole thing.
We need a policy.
For the existing fiscal year, do you want it to start September one, January?
So we need to do sixteen?
I would say we need to add language.
Add language? Okay. All right, so we can move forward then.
Who are you gonna get the phone from? All right, I'm gonna vote no on that last one.
All right, note that Roy voted no on the last one. And Donna, you voted no also, correct? So we got three to two.
Right.
All right, number seventeen. Discuss and consider approval, County Judge, to execute an interlocal agreement at ILA with the Texas Department of Transportation, TexDOT, for the Gators program.
You know, I'm questioning questions.
Yeah, and I'm sure that we'll be able to answer them.
Okay, good. So can all, can the commissioners, uh, be on this to execute interlocal agreement with the Texas Department? So we kinda have an idea what's going on. Can the Commissioners' Court be involved in this?
Be involved in it because you.
But I mean, as far as the, uh, like the, the scope of things, the, uh, the budget and all that, we don't have any idea what this stuff is gonna cost yet.
You want to test it, Billy?
I didn't.
Well, come on up front.
You know what, I'll tell you, Judge, are you with me on that or am I making?
As far as the cost for TexDOT, we wouldn't have to pay TexDOT anything.
What about the, uh, well, let's don't get into the whole zeal today, but I mean, in other words, the Commissioners be involved. Because it says, are we giving you the authority to sign off on all this stuff with Gager?
Once it's approved.
Once it's approved.
We approve it and.
Once you approve it, you'd have to approve it.
And so you're gonna have to come up, so they're gonna have to come up with some cost figures? Like what it's gonna cost for generators, what it's gonna cost for, uh, maintenance fees and stuff like that? Because we don't have any of those numbers. I don't think it are maintenance fees.
There is no maintenance.
Yeah, Gators, Mr. Gordon, he said it's all on them, on the maintenance.
Sir?
Uh, Mr. Gordon, he said the maintenance was on them.
Yeah. I know that, but you're gonna have, you know, all that stuff, school, tower and everything, all the fees. Gators not gonna charge for any fees at all?
It says attachment B is the budget. It says not applicable. This contract is a zero dollar contract.
Yes.
But he's been paid the same yearly. Yeah, yeah, yeah. I appreciate it. And you can, it's got the.
It says, it says that the amount of contract shall not exceed zero, zero, zero.
Okay. Well, I'm just curious. Thank you for answering my question.
You're welcome.
But still, everything to come.
I went over to the highlight, get it ready.
Yeah, everything still, everything still has to come. This is just saying that we, uh, FCC fees and all that too. In the interlocal agreement with TexDOT through the Gator system. And I know that, that Gator system was actually used in the curval area too during the flood.
Operational?
Operational. I know there were some, some radios that had, you know anything on that, John?
I know. I don't know the details exactly, but it was operational and I don't know something that's dangerous.
Yeah. I think Nimkid is the head of the TM, Texas Department of Emergency Management, and he, interview that he said that, you know, it worked very well. They did have a few radios that were not programmed. That were not, but, but that the Gator system was great throughout. So it was there. Let me ask you, were you had opportunity to read over all that, right?
Yes, sir.
Good with it all?
I am.
No, no problems, qualms or anything like that? Well, I didn't have any. I just wanted to make sure that you and the legal side looked over it.
So then not only dollars and budget items associated with this is what is through the grant that we're working with on that.
So if it's any money to be spent on this, other than the, then you come before the court, is that correct?
If you had to spend any money, you would, but there's, there's no money to spend.
And any contract that ties to just having to spend any money?
We would have to go, have to go before. Absolutely.
All right.
This is all on the towers and stuff. I had showers asking me about, uh, I guess it's four, me and Tony got in. About maintaining all the roads into the towers and all that. County's gonna do all that.
Charlie does it down there.
We had that one down in Smiley.
Yeah, it's a pretty good road all the way back there, I would say.
Yeah, it's all rock back there anyway. It's hard to get stuck on that hill.
We just, basically the county would maintain them in big rain washout or whatever.
I don't like the tower out here by the lakes to do to track it there to keep it free and try to keep the road. We had a call down today, the road got made and put in America. And I'm sure the one way to build like one of you over there.
Any other question? Anybody got a question?
Well, thank you. Answered all my questions on the seventeen.
The attorney have taken.
Entertained a motion?
I move we, uh, approve the County Judge to execute an interlocal agreement at ILA with Texas Department of Transportation, TexDOT and Gators.
Second.
Your motion is second, uh, County Judge, to execute interlocal agreement with TexDOT, uh, Texas Department of Transportation and the Gators program. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries. Eighteen, discuss twenty-twenty-five tax rates.
I might as well stay up here in case I'm listening.
It's a good idea. Sean, are you coming up here?
No.
What information would you like? The twenty-twenty-five W revenue rate is point two one oh three, the voter approval rate. The twenty twenty-five W revenue rate is point two one oh three, the voter approval rate, unadjusted for the increment is twenty five oh one. Voter approval rate adjusted for the unused increment is twenty six eighty-nine. Um, the no new revenue rate would generate a tax levy of fourteen three twenty-one, four twenty-five, giving you a M and O revenue of twelve three one two four seventy-five, and INS of two zero zero eight nine four nine. The VAR adjusted or unadjusted would give you a tax levy of fifteen oh two two eight fifty-four, M and O, of course, with the same INS of two zero zero eight nine four nine. Uh, the voter approval adjusted for the unused increment, which the increments are the amounts that you have not used over the last years, because you guys have went with the uh no new revenue, so you baked those. Um, that levy of the eighteen three one two zero eight three would give you an M and O levy of sixteen three oh three one thirty-four, and the same uh INS, the INS doesn't change depending on which rate you go with, of the two zeros or eight nine four nine.
And that was figured on the twenty-six?
Yes.
Yes. So.
With a hundred percent collection.
With a, with a hundred percent collection, that's what was figured on that one there. And like she said, we have, I guess since I've been here, and when we started, it was thirty-nine, thirty-seven was the tax rate, and we're down to twenty cents. However, we've been frugal each and every year uh by going with the uh no new revenue tax rate. However, this year, we've got the Randall Rather building, we've got the annex, and we actually have debt, we have not had any debt since I, actually, there was debt the first year that I was here, I think it was ninety thousand dollars, paid it off that, that year, and we haven't had anything since then. Now then, we've got a little bit of debt due to unforeseen circumstances that we had no control over yet. Uh, our tax rate right now in the county is twenty cents, and by going with the twenty-six cents is not a huge rate, but I think that will put us to where uh we will be able to continue and maintain everything that we've done uh in the budget. Shaw, do you wanna touch base on anything, or say anything?
Just um the little question I gave though. Kind of had it separated out, Colly, no need, uh, or copy of it or not. Yes. It's kind of separates it out, what it would look like, if you go into the ending year, fiscal year this year, revenues and expenditures for FY twenty-six, kind of where we would end.
So it's gonna take probably the zero point two five oh one tax rate to make our budget, make this thing work, at least.
At least.
At least.
I would, I would.
If nothing doesn't, because we got it too.
I would, I would this year, since we've elected all these years not do it, just because of where we sit, is to use the VAR, which is the three point five, because to try to get it, because I don't know if y'all are keeping up with the legislature, but there's a bill that's in there right now, where they're wanting to take that, even that away from us, that we can't do a three point five, they're gonna drop it to a two point five. And they're the ones that keep throwing the mandates and everything else on us, that we have to come up with money, but yet they're cutting where we get our money from. And this county's been frugal for, I know the last seven years since I've been in here, that we have done nothing but go down. Uh, and if we wouldn't have the problem with the buildings that we have now, we wouldn't have to be, be looking at that at this time either. So that's my thought, that I was trying to figure something here.
If they changed that in the legislature, does that affect us this year?
I don't think it'll fix us this, affect us this year, it'll affect us next year, but we won't have the option, we'll only have two point five next year. Did you figure that a hundred percent on this one here?
Now, if we went with the two six eight nine, we wouldn't have to have voter approval.
No. That's the highest you can go.
Without uh voter approval.
Yes, correct.
Well, if you went with the twenty-five oh one, it's gonna be pretty close to the budget, to what our stuff's gonna be.
Yeah, and the thing I don't wanna see, I don't wanna see us cut ourselves short, that's, that's the big thing, when, when you have that to go with, I mean, we have been uh, we're the, how was the lowest tax rate, the fifth of the eight, the top eight? And I mean, even, even by doing this, we knew it was gonna change it four or five cents when we went with the tax note, so um I would say to do the three point five for this go around, to see where we stand next year, we might uh, we may come back, depending on where we come back, uh, so we got seven years on that tax note, so.
The two point two six eight nine? You should be point five, three five.
I should go up for the three point five percent, that would be the three point five.
Oh, went up that much?
Well, I mean, that's as high as we can go, as a three point five percent.
But we'd be doing the voting on the two, on the two six.
Two six eight nine, and that's still, I mean, you look at the surrounding counties, and what their tax rate are, forty, fifty cents, I mean, I mean, that's not, I mean, I don't like having to do it, but we don't have much choice uh with what we've got. And we need to take care of all of our, our folks, and we need to take care of those buildings, and I don't wanna see us fall short.
I move that we make the proposed rate to point two eight, what is it, point two six eight nine, adjusted for unused increment rate.
Do I have a second?
Second now.
Motion is second, uh to use the VAR, uh unused increment rate, uh point two six eight nine. Uh, any further discussion? Yes, ma'am?
Are you still on eighteen, or have you moved to nineteen?
No, we moved to nineteen, so eighteen is good, so we moved to nineteen to propose a tax rate, take a vote in the public hearing. Commissioner Kozowski, you wanna do that again?
Yes, so we're, I'm gonna propose the tax rate to be the VAR adjusted for unused increment rate, zero point two six eight nine.
Second.
Motion is second for the uh twenty twenty-five tax rate uh to be zero point two six eight nine. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries. Uh, number twenty.
Uh-uh.
Huh?
Wait, have you set that?
Oh, yeah, number nine, which one?
Have you set that date for that?
Oh, set the public hearing. Alright, take a vote, schedule dates, and then public hearing, so we'll, we'll, go ahead, we're getting off of nineteen.
You have to announce the date of the hearing to vote on, uh, to have the hearing for this um tax rate, which will be on.
So public hearing will be on the twenty-fifth?
Twenty-fifth.
Of August?
Of August, August twenty-fifth. Three point five. See, we've, we've, we've could have done that every year since twenty nineteen. And we've always went with the voter approval rate, because we haven't had any debt.
Yeah.
Now that we have debt, I mean, I don't like it, I don't have much choice. And the scary thing is, we don't try to get it this year, they cut it next year, we don't have a two point five percent, I don't even know if we need two point five percent next year, but with everything that's going on, I don't wanna cut anything short. And I mean, twenty-six cents is. When I started, we were thirty-nine, thirty-seven, forty cents, and every year, and last year was twenty cents, and that's seventy, that's the seventy-six years, and we just went down every year. And I mean, so you're gonna go up to twenty-six cents, it's not a huge amount, but I mean, it does, it is definitely helpful for us as, as revenue. Yeah, so that hearing, always twenty-fifth, good? Nope?
No, I think September second, just, uh, it has to be whenever you adopt the budget.
Okay. Alright, yeah, because I gotta file the budget to fifteen.
So just go with September second.
Alright, so back over member, the, the tax rate that we did, so the uh public hearing will be on September the second. Alright, they still studying back there, hopefully they're good. Y'all agree? September second, alright. So move number twenty. Do we need to vote on September second? Go ahead, let's just do it, and we'll, that way we'll know.
I move we have to tax carry September the second, two five oh two five.
Motion is second, uh, for the tax hearing to be set September the second, twenty twenty-five. Uh, any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries. Twenty, discuss with action, the courthouse elevator. It just keeps breaking, and.
It's broke.
And it is antiquated, the equipment in there is old, so technically, there's the need for a new elevator in courthouse. We don't have it coming in the future, maybe with a deal, but we've got people in district court, uh, district judges are crying because people in wheelchairs can't get up to their deal. Huh? It's been down a month. We have, uh, we put this on here with the anticipation that we were gonna get some information on the cost of a new elevator, but it has not come in yet at this time, but I'm probably gonna put it on the next one. But we have had some thoughts from.
We've had a year, eight from a hundred and eighty thousand to three hundred thousand.
For, for a new elevator. And that's something that we're just.
It's a big spread.
It's a big spread, but it's something that we're gonna have to consider and get.
Unfixable.
Yeah, it's, we're gonna have to get it done, we're just gonna have to break down and do it. So um I was hoping that by the time we got to twenty, I would have some numbers for you, but that's as close as I can get on numbers till I get something else. So if y'all wanna agree to talk about it, whatever you wanna do, but we really need some set numbers, and I understand that.
Do we have any budget money, any budget on courthouse maintenance?
We've got courthouse maintenance, but I don't know how much we have in there, Shaw, it ain't that much, because. Because everybody, everybody taps courthouse, we always tap courthouse for everything.
So is it the motor gonna have any?
Everything, everything, the motor, the, the, the hydraulic systems, the packing, the bearings, it's just.
They had to redo the Randall Rather, that time, the technology on that.
They had to do the whole, yeah, right after they, you gotta have, had to put a whole new cylinder.
Wasn't much, I mean, seventy thousand, but.
Yeah, wasn't that bad?
But we, we, we thought we would have some numbers, but they haven't come in yet, but we already had it on there.
So do you want to keep on?
Regardless, we're gonna have to get it done, that's the, that's the bad thing. So basically.
The new elevator maintenance. The shaft and everything, or just the, all the mechanisms?
The shaft will be the same, but you're gonna need probably a cylinder.
Cylinder.
You're gonna need all new.
Pump.
Yeah.
I think every time, uh, stuff you lay out, every time they get in there, it's.
I mean, if you go down there and look, you'll see puddle of oil, that's all it is, it's just a pit of oil.
We don't want to follow, they're gonna eat it.
Nope, well, that's the good thing with the hydraulics, it's not gonna follow, it ain't gonna go like that.
You're gonna bleed.
Now, you might be stuck between, now, if it comes out, there ain't no way to come out no hole that fast, to do it. Now, you might be stuck between the floors for a little while, I'm telling you, because I like the cable. That, you go, it'd have to be an awful big hole to, to release a lot of fluid.
So you wanna tighten just four hours deal to?
And we just discussed it, I mean, we're gonna have to do it, but what y'all wanna do?
We're gonna have to fix it.
We're gonna, yeah, we're gonna have to fix it, let's just, let's just table it, we'll put it back on Monday, because I don't have no information for you, I'm sorry. Motion to table? Motion is second to table, uh, till next Monday, uh, any further discussion? All in favor? Opposed? Alright, y'all wanna take about a fifteen minute break, and then we'll start budget workshop?
Yes.
Yes?
Yes.
Alright, so we'll come back in here at five two. Where? Eleven, eleven. Hey, that, that thing is red, that light is red on that deal, five to that. See, you still trying to spend money on that? Five to eleven, and we'll start budget workshop, everybody is back. So... Items that y'all have up that y'all want to...
Cars, before I forget, we have to add uncomfortable borders, that nineteen hundred dollars for those computers on his person. So I'm gonna have to add that to next year's budget.
Okay. Oh, he didn't, he gone, he, he, you didn't, he didn't, he didn't catch me. He didn't, he didn't wanna stare around and see anything they changed.
And I guess, y'all wanna start with figuring out the health insurance, so we know...
Yeah, that's a big deal.
Before we get too far into this and lose track of that.
Let's do, let's, let's do that, that's item number ten. So let's figure out, go ahead.
I got Sean, I have it.
Alright, hold, hold what you got, and then we'll hit it. Let's do the health insurance now, because this is an important deal that we gotta get knocked out.
So if we go with the current plan, where next year is gonna cost us nine hundred and nineteen dollars and eight cents per employee. Right now, we're paying eight seventy-seven, eighty-two employees, we're gonna have a forty-one dollars and sixty-two cents increase per employee. We stick with the current plan, which is a deductible of a thousand. And three thousand for out of network, a thousand for in-network, office visit is a thirty dollar co-pay, and the prescription partial pay is ten, thirty, and fifty. If you go with option one, which is a different option, it's eight hundred and ninety-four dollars and forty-eight cents per employee. And that one deductible, in-network is twelve hundred, out of network is thirty-six hundred, the office visit is thirty-five, prescription co-pay is ten, thirty, and sixty. If you go with option two, it's eight hundred and sixty-seven dollars and forty cents, uh, month, uh, per employee. That deductible in-network is thirteen seventy, out of network would be four thousand one hundred and ten, office visit would be forty dollars, and then the prescription co-pay would be fifty, forty, and sixty-five. So...
So we stay with what we have, we're looking at forty-one dollars and sixty-two cents per person. And we, and we're exactly the same as what we have now, which is the cheaper co-pay, the cheaper prescription.
A thousand dollar in-network, um, deductible, three thousand for out of network, office visit is thirty dollars, and if they're prescription is ten, thirty, the highs if you could go would be fifty, where they'd mostly be, um...
So it's forty-one dollars?
Forty-one dollars and sixty-two cents per employee.
So it's about seventy-one hundred a month?
Seventy-one, I figured it out.
It's like seven thousand eighty-nine, I think it's our, most, say, seventy-one hundred, till we've had to spend a month, about eighty-four thousand a year.
Yes, sir. Can we stick with the current plan, yes, sir?
I wouldn't, I wouldn't wanna change the deductibles or anything like that, because...
I, if we change those others, it's gonna be a lot of out-of-pocket for people.
It will be, yes, sir, it will be.
Yeah, and I mean, maybe we can cut something else in this budget, move them home or something. I would like to see us stay where we're at.
And our life insurance is, uh, still gets to have four dollars and twenty-two cents per employee, so if you take, you stick with the current plan, and then also the life insurance, you're looking at nine hundred and twenty-three dollars and thirty cents per employee, for the life and the medical together at the current plan. Instead of the eight, eight-two, oh, four, we're paying now with the life insurance.
Those other figures sound good, so they go to having to draw against them, something happens to somebody.
But it didn't change that much overall, though.
Not really, um, the biggest, the biggest, if we, if you go to option two, then that has a bigger savings for us, but it is a higher, like, out of net would be four thousand one hundred and ten dollars deductible, and a thirteen seventy brand network. You're going up ten dollars on the office, uh, co-pay, and you're going up about five to ten dollars, um, and five dollars, ten, and fifteen on the prescription co-pay, if you go with the cheapest one that we could get for employee.
We stayed, we've been with this, and it's been, been really, really good. And I, what I'd be using for, hoping I'll never have to need it, but I don't know how y'all feel.
I feel like we ought to stay where we're at. I don't have the risk to you on that.
I mean, yeah, I hate to cut it and change, I mean, it's, it's possible. A little bit extra, but...
We got a motion and a second to remain, remain the same.
Renew the same.
Renew the same, uh, any further discussion? All in favor? Ten is out of the way.
Thank you.
Alright, thank y'all guys. Alright, Mr. State, what you got?
Well, last meeting we had out here in workshop, we went through the county attorney's salary and all of that. And Tony and I, hadn't been here that long, we got a little more information out of courthouse, just that and another. And I'd kinda like to redo it, if we can.
Yes, sir. I mean, on, once we understood it a little bit more, and more was explained to us, uh, we realized where, where we at on that.
What y'all...
And I know you made a motion, and, uh, and all, all this money's coming out of that...
Well, that motion, if you're gonna discuss it, you can forget about that motion, we just need to figure out what, what we're gonna do, and just make another motion.
I'd like to leave it the way it was. Save us some money on that.
So what you're...
I'm asking for another vote, is what I'm asking.
Well, I'm just saying, we need to put out, put out on the deal one, before what we're saying, the way it was, so I mean, I, I guess everybody's clear.
So what you're saying is, you wanna go back to the policy we had, where he was paying all the people out of...
Right, right, right.
SB twenty, Senate Bill twenty-two.
And then go with it like that?
We actually didn't understand it when we went through it last, and I just wanted to bring it up, that we can...
So how was it? I don't know exactly what it was.
We were gonna pay, we were gonna pay his, uh, lawyer out of the fund balance, and he was gonna use the money to increase his salaries and powers.
To, to part-time?
No, not, not increase salaries, it was gonna be to get, uh, two, uh, part-time employees, one part-time victim assistance coordinator, and a part-time investigator, so, uh...
But what were you gonna do, what you gonna give your other employees, the stipend or raise?
The, uh, the attorneys, they're already getting it out of that, out of this fund, see, it's not only attorney's salary that comes out of this.
Yeah, you were changing some clerks, clerk, in other words, you were gonna use that money in-house.
So we never changed any clerks.
We didn't, I probably can't even...
No, no, I requested the, the clerks to be changed, that, that wasn't voted on.
We didn't change that.
That, that wasn't voted on, the only thing that was voted on was, uh, making a, um, the assistant attorney a county employee.
A county employee, and then the other was to...
Other attorneys, uh, on the remainder.
Two investigators, nothing on the clerks. So it wasn't, no wages?
Then, uh, you would have an extra money left over, right?
Right, right. So, yeah, I mean, uh, one oh-four, one sixty, uh, is what comes out of the one seventy-five. So basically, not including these stipends for, uh, that the attorneys already get, uh, the, it's, uh, remainder would be about seventy thousand, that's not including the benefits that come out, uh, the attorney's stipends, um, and then, like I said, the, uh, investigator and victim assistance. So, so, uh, after you, after you take all that out of there, there, uh, you know, there might be... and then, like I said, the investigator and victim assistance, so, so, after you, after you take all that out of there, there, uh, you know, there might not even be enough to get two, and that was...
The clerks didn't get the raises.
Okay.
That's...
So how we were taking...
No, well, we, we mixed that in there with the clerks didn't get raises, because that would be through everybody else. This, this is only, this is only for him to use for the attorneys, the victims coordinator, and the investigator.
Well, I didn't, I didn't wanna go doing that, and the other ladies sitting in the office.
No, no, no.
But they're still gonna cite you, they're still gonna get...
Still gonna be stipend.
The attorneys, the attorneys get a stipend, so you go, you didn't get that, and the victim assistance.
The attorney's not the clerks.
And investigators, they'll each, they get like 5,000 now, though, could possibly get 11,000 or 15,000 next year, if the attorney chooses to do that.
And if the money's there, I mean, yeah. So it's not to, it's not to give raises across the board, not something that's about, it's a basic issue to get...
Yeah, the clerks, the clerks, whatever, we do whatever we decide to do, everybody...
Like I said, I didn't want the ladies, all in these offices around here, look, you know, them get raises, and them not get raises.
This is what they get now.
It's just not... So we leave it like that.
Huh?
No, you didn't get your money.
This is gonna be paying, so paying her out of this money, he's gonna pay her out of the fund balance.
So those combined, uh, you don't have to pay her money, you got it.
The, the rest of us, we should be...
Okay, yeah, I didn't know what, I just put in the max, so I thought, and then I thought we were gonna give her extra money.
No, like, for the age range, that's probably what's bad, for the age, so, I don't know, that probably is...
Right. Senate bill twenty-two?
I thought you were gonna give me that, so then, so then, they should have the money you have left.
So where do we stay now?
He was gonna take the money, whatever he got, if he was gonna pay his lawyer out of our fund balance, okay? The rest of his money, he was gonna use for these people, like, right here.
For the victims coordinator?
Victims coordinator, um, whatever the other one was.
Investigator?
Yeah, and investigator, but then his other investigator, would he gonna get a raise too?
No, no, it's gonna be a part-time.
I thought he was going to 67,000 instead of that particular case.
Uh, that was what I proposed, I forgot an answer on it.
But that's what you were gonna use the money for, if we, if we did it the way you wanted to do it.
Use the money for what now, like, to get, to get that raise up for the investigator?
Yes, you were gonna use the money, if we would've moved her salary out of the fund balance, you were gonna use that money for your two part-time.
Right.
And then you were going to, uh...
And the attorney's salary.
Use that other mon, yeah, and you were gonna use the other money, like, your chief investig, or your investigator, he was gonna go to 67,000.
Yeah, I think it was like a 3,000 or something like that.
Yes, and you were gonna use that in-house, to raise your people's salary.
Well, you say people, it's just like two people that are eligible.
Anyway, the thing about it is, if you used all your money for that, I was the only one voting against it last time. If you used your money to pay your lawyer's salary, which is 102, or whatever it is, and you used all your money for that, that would free up money for us. That 102,000, 106,000, we could use it to pay our insurance, which, which is gonna be 84,000 a year. We could use that money for other things, and we have this money in Senate Bill twenty-two for you to do it.
So you're talking about the 86,000 for the retirees that you voted against, is that what you're saying?
No, I was talking about the 7,000 a, a month, that we're gonna have to pay for health insurance, which is 84,000 a year. And if we didn't, if, if you used all your money you got from Senate Bill twenty-two, and we didn't take anything out of our fund balance, we would have a ex, we wouldn't have an excess, but we'd have money that we could use that we're gonna have to be paying her.
You just got 86,000 dollars back?
Sir?
There was 86,000 dollars, just came back with the money.
Right, because she didn't, we didn't have to take 86, well, 102,000, we didn't have to take out of the fund balance to pay that salary, we need to take it out of Senate Bill twenty-two. Am I making myself...
Yeah, and the whole reason that I, I pitched it that way, uh, was because of the, the 45% increase in the past, past five years, I, I'll ask you a question. You know, if, if Roland Bridge had 45% increase in, in labor, with the same amount of labor force, the, uh, understandable solution would be to get another person for people.
Right, and I'm not saying that, what I'm saying is, use the money Senate Bill twenty-two gave you, and don't put the burden on the fund balance on the county, 'cause that money was given to you for that reason.
The, okay, by paying the attorney, uh, out of the general fund, what it does is, it frees up that money to be able to get the people that we need to fill all the work, that's, that was the whole purpose behind it. So it's not that, I don't...
But you were only hiring two more people, and they were part-time.
Yeah, and that's gonna be about...
That's only two part-time people, you're not hiring a couple other people full-time, so you...
Yeah, but they're not that money, they're...
Right, but I mean, but if the Senate Bill twenty-two gave you that money, we shouldn't have to be taking money out of the fund balance, so you'll have more money in there. I think you can make it work, you're getting, what, 175,000?
Yes, sir.
All right, and that salary's 100, 106, you still got about 70,000 dollars left to play with.
Yeah, 60,000, 60,000 dollars of that, uh, would be the, the two part-timers. I had, I had done all the math on it, I guess, I wouldn't have come to you guys, you know, with this, if, if it wasn't absolutely necessary, this isn't a, this isn't a...
We would actually give two part-time people, one for the investigator, one for the victim side, it does give them two that we wouldn't have to pay for out of the bill.
That's right, but he can use that money, out of Senate Bill twenty-two money, that it was really sent down here for, to get him to use it, instead of us having to pay one of his attorneys out of our fund balance. That don't even make sense, makes any one...
I think it makes sense, because we only have three attorneys, 'cause his salary is paid from the state. And we have a large docket now, and, and, and we need, we need, I mean, we're only paying for three attorneys, that's not, that's not...
And you're not paying outside counsel for...
No, you're not paying outside counsel for anything, they're doing all the in-house, they're doing all the civil, they're doing, any questions that you have is asked. So you look at 20 or 30,000 dollars that we budget every year for that, that we're not having to pay them for either.
I'm just saying, we use the Senate Bill twenty-two money, that's sent down here for that, and not have to draw out the fund balance, especially, we just went up on the tax rate, and then we're gonna put a burden on a, you know...
What we do is...
That's my thoughts.
What we do is very separate in this state from, from just about any other department in the county, save the sheriff's office, but we're an arm of law, that's what we do. You know, if I'm asking for more people, it's 'cause I wanna keep the residents of this county safe, and I wanna make sure I have those people to do that. So, whatever y'all wanna do, I'm just trying to staff this office, so we can do our job, we, we stay a vote board as far as the word, um, this isn't, this isn't a law office, I'm, I'm making that...
I understand that, but that's the reason the, uh, state sent that Senate Bill twenty-two money, they sent it to you? Sheriff, you got some other D. C. bylaws with?
They're different, though, the county attorneys is different than, than the, than the, uh...
We're very limited on who we can use.
They're more, they're more limited on what they can do. And, and the thing about it is, is our court system is moving really well now with what we have, and I would never want anyone from here's office to leave, because it's, 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 it's like a pretty big reason why it's...
And, and let me explain one thing, it's not just the attorneys that are dealing with the increased labor, okay? So, when, when a case file or document comes into my office, it touches just about every person's hands before it gets to the attorney. So it's not creating more work only for the attorneys, it's creating more work for the entire office, by the tune of 45% in the past five years, I mean, that is substantial. Uh, the, the reason we're able to stay a vote board, uh, department, is because we do have crystal. But there's still boxes of intake that need to get cleared, and, you know, an assistant victim coordinator, and a, and an assistant chief, or assistant investigator would help us do that. And the only way to get there is, you know, to, to free that money to be able to get those folks now.
The only thing, we're, we're not telling you, you can't do that, we're just, I'm saying, I don't know what the rest, I guess they brought it up, but we're just saying, we'd like to use the money they sent you before we take it out of our fund balance and start doing that. Because right now, we're in the crunch, and, uh, that's my thoughts only, but I don't know, you, y'all brought it up, so what y'all want to do?
Well, I think it needs to come out of, out of that Senate twenty-two. I mean, we're cutting back a little bit, we got a bunch of stuff we need to do, and... I don't know. And I didn't want no raises for the, over here, because of women out there, we'd make it fair.
And, and this isn't about raises, I just wanna be clear about that.
Well, no, I know that, but it's, I think it needs to be pulled out of there, too.
So if that money gets pulled, I mean, do I have the assurances of the commissioners that we'll still be able to maintain, maintain that position? I mean, that's one thing we don't know.
Two is that if something happens, then she's gone, are we gonna continue with it?
Well, based on how much money we got, I mean, right now, I'd say yes, but, you know, I can't tell you what's gonna happen.
Okay, guys, you guys had this discussion previously, and you, Mr. Rosowski, said yourself, that the county would do what it took to keep her on board if they lost the money.
If we had the money, if we had the money.
No, that's where it worked.
No.
You said, if they lost the Senate twenty-two bill, Bill twenty-two money, that the county would do what they, what it could to keep her.
That's right, what we could, what we could do, that was key.
But you told her, her, her job was safe.
But actually, I don't wanna fight this battle, I fought it the other day, to be honest with you, and I was the only one voting against it. I didn't bring it up and put it on the agenda, I guess y'all did.
I did, yeah.
So y'all need to figure out what you wanna do, I already told you what I wanted to do, and I don't wanna have to go through this fight again.
But y'all gotta understand, that the county attorney's office is probably the most important office in this county.
I understand.
Because you can bring people to arrest people and put them in jail, and if you have no prosecution, you're spinning your wheels.
No, I understand that.
I think what their concern is, and I don't know the figures, because I haven't sat down and talked to anybody yet, but their concern is, if you're gonna pay for two part-time people, and you have this extra money to give your other five people, so they're gonna get a substantial amount, because you now went to two part-time people.
So could you still put the attorney as, you couldn't, you'd have to pay it all out of Senate Bill, so you couldn't give her a full-time job, pay a portion of that out of that, because you'd have to have, you can't, you, you have to have, you have to have that position before you can do it. Once you had that position, then you can supplement it, but...
Right, they can give her a supplement out of that, but he has a full-time here, but even with that, and the figures I came up with, the five employees that are getting money an hour, gonna get a whole bunch more, if that's the way he chooses, but I don't, I don't have a budget, because nobody's talked to me yet, so I have no idea.
And the five, just to be clear, and those five employees are three attorneys, investigator, victim assistant, those are the only ones that are eligible.
Right, so they'll get, could potentially get a lot more, a lot more than what they're getting.
Well, after the part-timers, like I said, that's gonna, that would be 60 grand alone, uh, at a minimum, uh, the, the currents, the, the current stipends right now for, uh, the attorneys is about, is 5,000, so, uh, plus you added the two part-timers, I mean, I, I guess, I mean, I can sit down with Sean, but I mean, the bottom line is, I don't see that there's gonna be all this, you know, yeah, total... Yeah.
The two part-timers is 83, 644.
But that's, that's just what I came up with, I don't know what he wants to pay him, I give him the high end, and 29 hours a week, 'cause I have no idea.
But then, in addition, that's SB, would be SB twenty-two money, and then, in addition to that, of the 175, I guess, where's the rest of that? We have 175 of SB twenty-two, which we have, correct, so we got 83 and 644 accounted for, then I guess we're done.
He can divide that up between the five, three attorneys, the victim assistant.
Are they currently getting...
Yes.
They're currently getting a portion of that.
Correct, but it would go up.
Right, and how much is that portion?
And none of that is counted on, so it's all the state.
Well, no, it's SB twenty-two, so I, I was just trying to get in my head, if we have 83,600, how much are we currently paying the other...
Right now, they're 5,000 a year.
Just 5,000 pieces?
5,000 each year.
Or five people, four people, five people?
Five.
Five, so we got 83 and 644. What? Yeah, being 108, and then, so we have 175.
And then you gotta factor in too, you know, as far as the assistant investigator, you know, ammunition, you know, things like that, and that stuff has, I mean, it's not just the position, uh, everything that that person needs to be outfitted with, uh, would also come out.
Can make some money out of it?
Yeah, it's for, it's for, it's for...
Yeah, that, that's what I'm saying, so we're gonna come up with about 67,000 of those, to, to have that, but then to also redistribute, I'm saying.
If it's all used?
If it's not all used, you can cut?
If, uh, no, if it's not all used, uh, basically, basically, user or loser, you have to say that.
Guessing that.
Like I said, I have, we have to follow the budget Friday, but I have nothing, no figures on this, so we need to figure...
We've gotta get it straight today.
Yeah, and I didn't know that they could get ammunition and stuff, so that's a whole nother problem with that. Because we've, we've only paid salaries out of their portion.
So, and again, I mean, I really don't...
She put something on it for us?
I guess, okay.
Now, I remember we talked about the last, uh... Like that Lexis and that stuff, that was totally different.
Right.
Yeah, we took that out of the, totally, definitely.
Right. But it's, it's saving your department money, since that came out of the law library, I believe.
Yeah.
Law library.
Yeah, that, that particular line, I remember, so sure, sure, it's a complication.
I just know with that now, it's gonna run us about 24,000 a year now, so we won't have this law library money as long as we thought, if we, five, six years, maybe.
It's gonna be on the users.
Right.
Do it till it, do it till it runs out of there.
Well, yeah, yeah, that's fine, but I'm just, we're gonna keep that in mind, too.
It still should be getting replenished, though, it certainly should be getting money, I just don't know how much.
Yeah.
And currently, the, the benefits and the insurance and all that, for, for the attorney also comes out of his money.
Or Kristen, please?
Comes out of SB...
Right, yeah, that all comes...
It will now be internal funded, if she stays internal funded.
So that, like that, will be in the, in the base. As a possible alternative as well, uh, I just asked this question, then I'll answer, I'll answer now, is that the, the entire amount for the attorney, uh, doesn't have to come out of the general fund. If it was a set amount that was set by the county for that, uh, third attorney, then they could be supplemented with SB twenty-two to get them to the salary that, you know, is, is fair, and that everybody else is getting. Uh, and that, that would lessen the amount of the total cost of the county, uh, if that were reduced, and then the rest of it came out.
But she would still be full-time?
Yes.
With the county. I'm agree with anything that we can get her full-time, that's, that's my personal opinion.
I mean, I'm just trying to talk some...
I know, but if Senate Bill twenty-two goes away, she's not, that's what I'm saying, but if something, God forbid... I know, but if Senate bill twenty-two goes away, she's not, that's what I'm saying, but if something, God forbid, happens with Senate bill twenty-two, we're out of attorney.
Yeah, you could shuffle the amounts to where that overage is, is utilized on her end, that would cut out a lot of that much on the county side, still use all of your SB twenty-two money and, and.
So basically, what that amounts to is it being partially funded by the county, uh, and the remainder being funded by, now, the, the main, our question will be is, you know, what, what that number, you know, y'all wanna do?
Sixty-seven thousand?
Sixty-seven thousand. Well, give or take that, but sixty-seven is kind of what you have left over, and then what Sean would think would be a good number to work with on your end.
And that way, if something did happen, she would still be in priority, we just, at that time, we may have to adjust whatever this little bit of a difference is.
Right.
That's why I brought that up.
I, I, I like, I like that idea. The line for us, do we?
I just don't know how much.
How much?
Well, I, and I don't think we can tweak the numbers, but given, you know, give or take from my figure, we have sixty-seven, about sixty-seven thousand.
And I don't know what he's gonna pay his part-time people, I haven't been told any of that, so I don't, I'm just going by what, I'm just going by.
I meant to being that to be, you know, between sixty and seventy thousand, I mean, it's gonna depend on, on current rates for those positions, but they are making part-time, kind of making benefits that go along with that.
Twenty-nine hours a week?
Yeah.
Twenty-five hours a week?
Right.
Can't go over twenty-nine, right?
Right, so I put twenty-nine hours, the victim's assistant, at what a clerk one would pay.
You had twenty-five, or there, there, twenty-five hours?
I did twenty-nine, I re, re, at first I said twenty-five.
She figured out the highest amount.
Yeah, when I hit and figured the highest, at, uh, twenty-three, eighty-six, what a clerk would pay, so that would be thirty-five, nine, eighty-one. Um, and then we have to take worker's comp out of that. I think just worker's comp out of that, and then the, um, part-time investigator at twenty-nine hours at twenty-eight, twenty-seven. Uh, come out to forty-two, six thirty-two, and eight eighty-three, thirty-eight, worker's comp.
Right, yeah, and that's possible, I guess.
Yeah.
So, uh, whatever the variables you're making, I guess, I don't know, that is my investigation.
I'll have to go back.
Yeah.
Thirty-something, forty-five.
Yeah.
Keep the ways being open. So you gonna do that, and then what happens if Kristen decides to leave, and how you gonna find another attorney? Something y'all really need to consider, because you just don't, can't find attorneys, we, we had opened for two and a half years, we couldn't even get an attorney to come out of law school coming.
It's a problem.
You know, that sixty-seven, if it's sixty-seven, seven dollar ticket, you're not gonna find any better attorneys than you got. I'm just telling y'all that, y'all know, y'all don't sit in court, y'all don't see what happens, I'm just telling y'all, we cannot afford to lose that. That would be, that would be detrimental to this county.
She hopes us dating questions.
There's times before when you send a deal to Allison Bass, and you get an answer thirty days later.
Go to Allison and Bass and pay, and, and slated fee.
You give stuff to her, and she has stuff to you the next day or the day after, I mean, you've got the information that you need, you don't have to wait months to get it.
Well, I think the structure, kind of what they're talking about, that we're, you know, at the end of the day, the, wherever that overage is added to her and then eaten out, you're not, you're going from one side to the other, not.
You look at forty, forty-something thousand dollars that would be to the county, you save that on Allison and Bass, it's a deal twenty or thirty thousand dollars if you budget their view, that you don't budget no more. And you still have SB twenty-two money, but it'll still come out of sixty-seven, seventy thousand, county budget out of here.
Let me tell y'all something, we've sat here all morning long, hammered on the sheriff about his people being able to go out of county, who sat here and we, I didn't bring this back up, some other people brought this back up.
I voted against it.
You understand that, correct? Now, y'all are talking the same old thing, that money was meant to go, Senate bill twenty-two was meant to take care of this office, not a burden on the taxpayer, but if y'all gonna vote for that, are we still in session? Then I wanna go back to Island twelve and give him his outer county employees, we hammered on him.
We give it to, y'all the ones that.
We give it to him to go on, we're gonna be giving stuff.
Y'all are the ones that, that sit there for a long time, I, I, y'all can agree with what you're saying.
No, I'm saying if you're not gonna, if you're not gonna try to save the county some money and try to make this thing work like a business, then what are we doing second?
That's the key to success, is work like a business.
That's right.
Because if you don't have attorneys to work like business, you don't have a sheriff. You don't have a sheriff's department arresting, and you don't have, uh, uh, folks that are prosecuting them, you don't have anything.
Well, let me tell you this, if you don't have the money to pay them, you don't have anything, and that's something y'all need to get straight, this is the biggest business in the county. And if you don't run your money right, you don't have any money, so if we're gonna do this, I wanna go back to Island twelve and give them their outer county deputies.
I don't have a problem with that.
What do y'all wanna do, y'all are sitting here not on the law, tell me, y'all the ones that brought this back up, or what do you wanna do?
I don't think we're gonna spend any money right now like that.
No, that ain't the answer I wanted, what do you wanna do?
I wanna.
You make a, make a statement of what you wanna do.
I just wanna go out against it, to what I want to do.
I just wanna see the Senate bill twenty-two money being used for what it's designated for, and then not come back out of our, uh, general fund.
So is that a motion from you?
Yes.
Is that a second from you?
So do you want, do you, do you want, the, the, the island's on table, it's two things here, we can go back to the sheriff's, sheriff's deal also, I don't have a problem with that.
No, we're not on sheriff right now, we're on.
You just brought it up.
I did, but I mean, we're talking about something else.
You brought it up, but that's something that's.
But if you are gonna do this, if we're not gonna manage our money right, we just, we don't need to argue with you.
Classify it to the point where, are we go, are, are we gonna put our attorney full-time, utilizing all we can out of the Senate bill twenty-two money? Or are you just gonna go back to the old way and take the opportunity that if she leaves, then we can define another attorney scheme?
I think what he's saying is he wants to go back to the way it was, we originally paid him out of that.
I think y'all, y'all three commissioners will come to court, in district court and county court, and see what happens, that's all I have to say. Because y'all don't know what's happening in the county on the judicial side, but I, I, I'm just telling you.
That's not our job, our job.
Well, that's your job. That, that's your job, that's your job, yes, it is your job to know what each department entails, that's your job. And I know, I know you've been by a lot of departments, and so has Roy, to see what's going on in there and happen.
Yes, so the Senate bill twenty-two money pays the county attorney's office, I mean, for Kristen, so then what's left to be paid is paid out of the general fund, correct?
Well, if you, if we do it that route, that they were going, that whatever was left over, it would end up being forty to sixty thousand dollars that would come out of general fund.
General funds.
But Kristen would be a full-time county employee, so if Senate bill twenty-two went away, she'd still be here.
But you're gonna have to pay her out of the fund balance.
Out of the fund balance, then.
Forty to fifty thousand, if they can come up with the, the, the sixty-seven or whatever thousand extra that, that county come up with.
I'm gonna tell you, boys, gotta watch what your money is, because we're having to go up on the tax rate now, we need to pay attention to what's going on.
Because we've got two buildings that are falling down that we have no control.
I didn't say that, I just said we need to pay attention to the money and the way we're spending it.
The tax rate's been great for the last seven years, we haven't touched anything, haven't touched anything, we banked that, that three point five percent every year. This year, God forbid, we had, we had to have it, next year, when we see where we come, we may not need as much of it, may need the three point five percent again.
You were right, God forbid.
Yep.
We need to watch how we're spending our money, because you, you know, it can run out.
I understand it can run out.
Y'all want me to go, we can, when we're done with this, like, we can take a recess, I can go figure everything out and bring it back to y'all, y'all can see it in black and white, or?
That might be a good idea, for them to see, if we do it the two different ways.
Yeah, I can do it a couple different ways and.
I'm gonna do everything I can to advocate to keep our, 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 our attorneys, we've got the law enforcement that's enforcing the law, and we got the county attorneys that are prosecuting it. And if you don't have that in the county, you don't have anything, sorry.
Other than criminals.
Other than criminals, and the thing about it is, is county is not a business for fines and revenues, but these offices bring in fines and revenues, unless they go to prison. So there's a, there's a, there, there, a lot of your revenue that comes in this budget comes from a lot of fines and fees and penalties that people pay. It's not all about that, but that's a, a supporting factor in the budget, sorry.
Well, I think it sounds like a good compromise in utilization of SB twenty-two and county money to come together, it's not all a burden on the taxpayer, but yet it's, you know, benefiting from, from the office or, or office or else, kind of, between the middle. Yeah, y'all can figure that out, and that help you guys?
Right, I understand what you're saying, right, I mean, I, I, keep Kristen here, I mean, just, you utilize the money that we can receive from the state and, and save the taxpayers money, I mean, on the, don't take a beep in the general fund.
And I know we had at least one attorney in the past that was here that was really good, but move on to bigger and better things.
I got the whole reason for that Senate bill, the reason why legislation did that is to help rural communities to keep their employees. That is the whole reason, because there are bigger agencies out there that are paying it much better, that these people are leaving, our attorneys are leaving, our investigators are leaving, our victim advocates are, the best people that you have here are leaving to go to those other places because they're paying better than them. So that Senate bill was there to create it, to give them the money to make sure that they supplement their pay to try to equal these bigger counties, to try to keep their people, keep that money going.
And see, we were fortunate too, because on the sheriff's side, that was money to give to counties that weren't even paying them where they were at, at the time, they were getting weighed a lot less. We were already above that, good, good, but now that we've got this, this is more icing on the cake for us, but it was getting to a lot of the, the smaller counties to be able to pay a deputy the set amount that they, they, I don't remember what it was, but a lot of these counties were twenty, thirty thousand dollars under, whatever, uh, whatever they were, and this actually helped, which is a good thing for the state. But you, but, but everybody sitting on here knows, Congress is not getting any better in the United States, it's not getting any better.
And for the sheriff's department, they allowed them to use the money to purchase equipment as well, to keep better for their benefits. It's a sum, it's not supposed to be set to basically bring attorneys over here and pay their salaries out, it's a sum.
Anyway, y'all want numbers, or y'all wanna do, I, I don't care.
I don't know what difference in numbers, you make me worried about it right now, so let's just go on and finish this up, whatever we're gonna do, so let's move on. Well, I mean, if you wanna make the important decision on what those numbers are, we can get those to you here pretty.
So I guess we'll wait on y'all to figure out what you wanna do.
Well, I thought it was on the raises, I was all against that.
It was not on either.
That's why I brought it up.
It was just being dealing with Senate bill twenty-two money.
That's the reason I brought it up, I brought it far to last time, Donnie, I know you're against it, but that's what I asked today, you don't have to be toward me the way you was, brought it up, yeah.
I'm gonna have to be what?
Quit talking to me like, I feel like that you're talking against me all the time, and I don't like that, of course.
Uh, we'll say this later on, but I'm not talking against you, I'm just telling you the way I feel, now, if we can't tell one another how we feel in this courtroom, then we're not gonna do a very good job, you understand?
Yeah, I understand that, but when I, when I asked about the raises, that's all I wanted to know anyway.
Yeah.
I never talked much about the raises, I talked, when you asked me about it, I said, we're gonna take money out of the fund balance and carry it over and put it in the, uh, we, we, and it'll stay in there. So you're gonna have a hundred and twenty-five thousand over here.
Right.
Now, what's he gonna do with that money? It's gonna have to go to raises or two part, two part-time employees.
Right.
College just told you wanna go with sixty-three thousand.
Sixty-seven.
Sixty-seven thousand laying on the table after that.
Right, right.
But they've elected to take that sixty-seven thousand, put it towards the, the salary or the other one, and there's no raises other than what they're utilizing Senate bill money.
And I told you the other day, it was in the paper that we had, and I tried to explain myself to you, so I don't think you need to try to jump on me about it.
I ain't jumping on you.
Well, I'm not gonna put up with it, I just wanna, let's make some decisions and go on, what do y'all wanna do, y'all the two that brought it up, I was already voted against it, but it was behind on me, I was ready to move on, so what do y'all wanna do?
Well, the way I looked at it, you know, it was, well, we receive the money, they receive it, you know, the SB money, and then divvy it up, and then the other employees get raises, and then it wouldn't have been fair across the county for the other secretaries or anybody else getting money.
Other employees get no raises, that, that is designated for three items, and that's it, nobody else, no clerks, nobody could get anything, only person can get it again is the investigator, the attorney, and the victim's coordinator, that is it.
That's what I was explaining, but I was just, when they asked me, I said, with this amount, they will get more of a supplement, I guess is what you call it, compared to what they get this year, because it's less, because you took the attorney's figures out. So they would, those five would get more, so.
Potentially.
Potentially, if that's what you wanna, but I don't know what you wanna do, because nobody's told yet, so.
We'll have numbers.
So let's vote on this and go on, guys, whatever y'all wanna pick.
Well, I would like to see the majority of it go to whatever the, uh, the assist, the assistant attorney, and then whatever else we, we left to pay towards her salary, that can be done. All that go to there, and then the rest can be between the, the, the other ones, but majority of it, that's sixty-seven thousand dollars, I would say go to having a full-time assistant attorney. That's a motion.
That's, that's what you talked about that sixty-something thousand a while ago, too, have it go back there and, on Kristen's employment.
And the rest out of general fund.
Then the rest out of general fund.
Not the entirety, that's my motion.
I'll second you.
All right, motion and a second for the, uh, the assistant attorney to get majority of the salary paid for out of that, is that, did that, you know, you remember where we're at on that? Okay.
You'll have to figure out the exact.
Exactly, well, any further, and then, and then that might give you just between the ones that can get it, no raises for anybody else. All right, any further discussion?
Call for a vote?
I'll fix it to, if there's no discussion.
I don't have any discussion.
All right, all in favor?
Uh.
All right.
No.
All right.
I'd keep a.
Now, go back to Island twelve. Sheriff, I want you to have those out-of-town people that can travel. I've sat here and tried to save money on this deal, and I think it'd be beneficial to you, and I'm sorry that I was spoke up against it, I think you need to have it.
Well, I've got the amount for you too, Commissioner, I'm, we're at twenty-nine thousand five hundred and six dollars. The the county currency pays seventy cents a mile, and I looked at every deputy that lives outside of the county, from the county line to their house, it costs us twenty-nine thousand five hundred and six dollars a year.
Hey, we're giving money away today, Sheriff.
But you're not paying your budget, you're gonna absorb that to be your current budget for this.
I'll get the money out of Senate Bill twenty-two, I'll have to move some stuff, cause I can't use it for that, but I can use it somewhere else.
Thank you, Sheriff. So, is that a motion?
Yes.
That a motion?
I say it.
Got a motion in a second.
Is anybody else wanting anything while we're giving stuff away?
Any further discussion?
No, you don't count.
You got a new truck coming.
All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed, alright.
What about you, Hall?
I'm good.
If you know a few more of my staffers, do you need another camera?
What ask you there, Charlotte?
Um, probation is still not complete, so their tolls in the budget that I sent y'all, um, are still working.
Could change, plus or minus a little bit.
Uh, I told him I do need it by Friday, we gotta have something, I know it can change, but.
Did we ever get the amount that we were gonna get, the total amount that was coming with the, to three hundred?
Not a total.
Not a total, but it's, it's about three hundred something.
What we're gonna have to do.
But yet, I wanted to make sure that.
We can play this later with the bank accounts, we're not gonna have money to pay them out of from the state.
For that department.
We're gonna probably have to use them until we get the money back.
But you got that figured out?
I think.
What else?
Are we through?
I don't know.
Well, we're not through, we're all through at workshops.
Yeah, I'm through.
Okay. There's two other items.
What are you doing, my phone, you take my phone?
Alright, so we are done with workshop, and we're gonna file the, uh, budget on the fifteenth.
Yes, no, the second.
No, that's the, that's the hearing, the hearing.
Okay, the hearing, I'm sorry, I'm gonna go for you.
Alright, we're moving number twenty-two, approve advertisement for proposed salaries increase for elected officials.
Yes, so I did that with the thirteen hundred dollars.
I mean, it doesn't change the salary, it's just more, yeah, it's a stipend, so just wanna note note that.
But it's, it's still a year.
So we had a motion.
Second.
Motion in a second, uh, for approving the advertisement of proposed salaries, any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries, twenty-three, approve special notice by publication, uh, public hearing for proposed budget.
And we had to wait to raise, to y'all set the tax rate, so I knew which one to go with, so I haven't, that has to go on paper. Or then our, the hearing would be September second.
So that's the September, so it'll be September second, so it's twenty-three, September twenty, September second, September second. What else? Anybody else have anything? Commissioner Roy?
Make the motion real strong.
Second. All in favor? Alright. Oh, oh, yeah, yeah, the other thing is on, that next Monday's meeting is gonna be at one P M, so that we can adjourn to go all be with Cloud, so if y'all have any questions, we call from Congressman Cloud on anything from the special session to the budget or whatever, we'll all be able to go over there together Monday. So if you've got any questions on the big beautiful bill, whatever space may be that you wanna know, he'll be there to answer. We have Commissioners Court here, Roger, and then we're going to the Randall Rother building, and we're gonna finish up there and adjourn.
Maybe you have a few items on there at one.
Do we need a motion to approve that?
It says approve special notice. Twenty-two.
Hang on, guys. Okay, we need to approve number twenty-three, a special notice. We send the motion to the General.
Make a motion real strong.
No, we send, we send the motion to the General.
I'm saying.
Alright, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed, okay, so twenty-three, we need to approve the special notice by publication of the public hearing for proposed budget. Do you have a motion?
You don't have it, you don't have a copy of it, I didn't know it was one to give y'all, it's better on the tax rate, but I can show it to everyone. It's gonna look like this.
Motion.
Just, you have to read it the tax rate.
You gotta read it, don't we?
I don't know.
They did in the past. He's got glasses on, Kevin on his dead daddy or somebody.
I think it's that one, that's more money.
This is not filed, one's not filed yet. I think we read it, one's just been filed.
But this has to go on the paper this week.
Alright.
Cause it'll go on paper Friday, this is the most popular fifteen.
That don't it, so then, alright, we do have a motion to approve the special notice publication for the public hearing for the proposed budget, do I have a second?
Second.
Motion in a second, uh, any further discussion? All in favor? All opposed, so you put it in, put it here. That was for that, alright.
Make the motion real strong.
Motion in a second, General, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed, alright, here we go.